Okay, any other items? All right, I have one comment card on item F-10. Is it okay if I have the gentleman come up before we approve in here item eight, Mr. Peter Carnesal? Come on up, sir. This is on item F-10, sir.
Basically, F-10 is for the, basically, a deed correction that is long overdue. It's, the lift station, T-39, is built on mainly Brevard County land properly, and it has a little tiny sliver of Vieira East Community Development Site land. We have already approved this at our, and I am the vice chair of that board, so I am fully aware of that. Okay, and I just wanted to make the comment that we are, we obviously are improving, and have no problems with it if we've already approved it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, can I have a motion to approve the agenda minus F-8 right now?
I move to approve consent less F-8.
Motion by Commissioner Loebur, second by Commissioner Zanka. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, passes five zero. County manager, Mr. Loebur, F-8?
Sure, just real briefly, and I can give you more background if you all want, but the short way through it is I move to approve it, but to direct staff not to record until April the 7th.
Okay, that's a motion. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Zanka. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, passes five zero. We are moving into public comment. I have one public comment card, and that is Mr. Burns, Robert Burns.
Morning, Robert Burns, Vieira. It's been repeatedly brought to my attention by both private citizens as well as current and former elected officials that Commissioner Loebur has listed his contact information on his Florida Bar Attorney profile as that of the, the contact information of the counties. Out of concerns of past demonstrated retaliation by Commissioner Loebur against private citizens and elected officials, I've been asked to raise these troubling issues on their behalf. Since being elected and as of this morning, Commissioner Loebur on his Florida Bar profile has listed his only contact phone number and email as a taxpayer-funded phone number and email for the District County Two office, which is manned by his taxpayer-funded staff. Commissioner Loebur often asserts that he is not taking on new clients since being elected, but has contradicted those very statements right here from the dais by admitting to taking no less than two private clients recently. It is a statement of fact that Commissioner Loebur is currently practicing as a private attorney and has been paid to do so. Unlike his wife, who is an attorney for the government, Commissioner Loebur is not, so there is no justifiable reason for Commissioner Loebur to be utilizing taxpayer resources for his practice as a private attorney. Despite the obvious potential ethical and legal concerns of attorney-client privileged information being subjected now to public records requests, it is also concerned that he is indeed using county resources for his private business. He has increased the charge of public records, with public records requests due to his need to separate county work from his legal work. How does the public know whether he is holding back public records while arguing that they are attorney-client privilege? If just one person uses that contact information he has listed to contact him for legal matters unrelated to county business or to the benefit of the taxpayers, then he is essentially running his quote-unquote "closed" practice through the county commission office. Commissioner Loebur enjoys operating a law firm at the expense of taxpayers. He pays no overhead, no employment taxes, no staff wages, no IT or server charges. He doesn't pay them, but we do as the taxpayers. It is important to note that, however, he doesn't have to accept a client through his office. He can still profit and benefit for simply referring another, a client to another attorney, which also comes with the implied endorsement of the county commission. His office already has an issue with one staff member using the county's resources for her work as a second, second job as a professor at a university while on the clock. Even on his annual report for his LLC Wink's Holdings, he has his contact information to be mailed at the copy of the, or the care of the county commission office. Because of this demonstrated pattern of misuse of government resources, we're asking that he immediately remove his contact information from the county of Florida Bar profile and that the county request a forensic J-LAC audit from the state into his use of taxpayer funds for his own personal use. If there is no wrongdoing, he should welcome such an audit. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioners, I have a, yes, sir.
May I briefly?
Yes.
I just pulled up my Florida Bar website as of now, and I haven't changed it this morning, and it's been some time since I recall it having been changed. My mailing address is in Kissimmee, not 2575 North Courtney or 2725. So unsurprisingly from our friend here, who is a convicted criminal and an abuser of women, objectively as found by a court based upon his domestic violence criminal conviction, and also based upon a, either an injunction for protection or similar order out of state being currently in place against him from a woman who apparently convinced the judge that he had raped her. These allegations coming from an individual who grieved me to the bar unsuccessfully, where there was no probable cause found, an individual who grieved me to the state attorney's office where his complaint to them was dismissed as unfounded, and an individual who made a slew of allegations pertaining to campaign financing for my 2018 campaign where there was no probable cause found either. This is an individual who has an axe to grind. This is an individual who has a history of lying, who has some government documents indicating he's a member of one race and conveniently changes later in life to be a member of another race, which is interesting. This is an individual who claims just now that I had raised the rates for public records. I believe that was a board action based on abuse of staff time by individuals who were essentially gaming the system and costing us money as a county by extension taxpayers and village payers. This is an individual who clearly has no qualms not only violating the law, but repeatedly violating the law. Received a package recently from BCSO that indicated that he had a number of Facebook accounts and that he was making posts under other names. This is a guy who either is or was recently under investigation over the past few months by the Cocoa Beach Police Department, by BCSO, and by Melbourne PD. So perhaps he has a convenient conspiracy that may explain all that, but this is a gentleman who has done a number of horrible things in his life, a number of horrible things in recent time. And frankly, I don't know if he's up here for attention or because I represented a victim who he raped. But be that as it may, he certainly has an axe to grind. So I'll leave it at that.
Okay, I'm going to move to item J-1. I had a request to move it up to the front, and it doesn't look like it might be that lengthy, Commissioners. So I have three cards on this, and County Manager, did you want to lead into this item first? Or, oh, there you go. Thank you, Mr. Darling.
Item J-1 on the agenda is Omni Healthcare's revised proposal for the COVID vaccine administration in Brevard County. And we're requesting that the board provide direction on entering into an agreement or drafting an agreement to enter into with Omni, accepting the proposal as written, and then authorizing the chair, depending on the board direction. On Wednesday, March 10th, we received a revised proposal changing the initial proposal that was received on March 5th from Omni Healthcare to participate in administering the COVID vaccine in Brevard County. They submitted the proposal stating they could establish up to three additional vaccine sites in the county, each site doing 3,000 vaccines per day for an additional 18,000 per week on top of the capacity the county and DOH already have. So I don't know if there's any questions or you want me to discuss it further?
No, thank you, sir. Commissioner Loebur, Commissioner Zanka, do you want to hear the cards first, or you guys have comments?
I've got just a few, if I may.
Okay.
So I've spent some time speaking with FDOH and also with staff about this item in particular. The short version is, I don't have a problem with it, but I want to explain, you know, a little bit longer why. FDOH, since Publix has been brought on board, at least FDOH here in Brevard receives between 1,500 and 3,500 shots a week. They find out the Friday before or thereabouts what they're going to receive the following week. And in short, they have a capacity to inoculate themselves up to 6,000, and they can surge it to 8,000 with just the weekend in order to get that prepared. So seeing as how we've not had more than 3,500 in a week come since on board, and they can handle up to 8,000 a week internally, and we do have other contracts in place, for instance with Caliburn, to go beyond that, I don't know that we're ever going to get to a point where there are going to be enough shots that we're really in the, in the solid, I should say, tens of thousands range, where this would be something that comes into play. So I don't know really that this is going to impact much, certainly not in the near future. I don't have a problem bringing on other providers that have the capability, whether it's Omni, whether it's Medfast, whether it's another group altogether, to ensure that we have the greatest possible capability to get shots in arms. But again, this is not, the consideration isn't of the total number of vaccines that are making their way into Brevard County. What we have any ability to even be suggestive about or persuasive on are just those shots that are coming into FDOH in Brevard. So the shots that are coming in from the feds directly to the providers and to the practices, this, this wouldn't impact that. This wouldn't impact necessarily the shots that are being distributed directly from the state. Certainly, at this point, the only shots that I'm aware that this could impact are those over the 8,000 or actually over, over a little higher than that once the other contracts are activated, assuming that's the direction FDOH wants to get into. I don't, whether we pass this or whether we don't pass this, want to put us in a position where we're essentially pushing FDOH to select which particular provider is the winner or loser, but I don't mind having more available in the arsenal. So to that extent, I'll move to approve it, and I'll, I'll wait until we have a public comment to see where it goes.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Zanka, did you want to weigh? Okay, I'd like to call Mr. Jason Steele. Then I have Mark Babango, and then Mr. Dr. Craig Del dish.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here. I represent Omni Healthcare and lobbyist for it. And I wanted to just briefly speak quickly because this has been going on for a long period of time. And really, this is about the safe, safety and health of, of the people that are out there in the general public. We appreciate what all hospitals have been doing and, and, and things of that nature. Omni was one of the first groups that started getting involved with vaccines here and was basically pushed off to the side later on. There is a false narrative going on that there's potential profit-taking here on a vaccine. The last thing in the world that's happened with Omni Healthcare is, is they have spent thousands and thousands of hours, basically for free, passing out vaccines, doing COVID tests, and provided the health, safety, and welfare of being able to establish a place to get shots immediately. So I appreciate what Commissioner Loebur is saying in regards to potentially there won't be enough shots coming in. Well, I got news for you. Marco Rubio's office says there's going to be tons of shots, and we're going to get flooded with vaccines, and everybody will need to be getting vaccines as quickly as possible. I appreciate the hospitals being involved. They obviously are not charging anything for that, but you have to take into consideration that the hospitals received many, many dollars upfront from the CARES Act. And I'm not condemning them at all for doing what they're doing. I'm just saying we need as many people as possible that can provide these shots to the general public. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Deliglish, and I would appreciate you accepting Omni's proposal to be one of your providers for vaccines. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. My guest, Dr. Del dish, Deliglish. I read it, I never say it, so come on forward, sir.
Can I take off my mask?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great. Okay, well, first of all, I want to thank you all for allowing us to speak and for all the work you do. So I think the history here is well-known. Going back to March of last year, we began testing people pretty much at the same time or even advance of the Public Health Department here. Our work has been published in the newspaper, on TV, and, and Mr. Steele has reviewed it, so I won't go through that. I'll simply say that I think we can all agree that the rollout of vaccine in Florida and in the United States has had its challenges. Florida today is in the bottom third of states in our country for the percentage of shots being administered. There are stories every day about millions of doses of vaccine that can't be found. There were 14 million of the Johnson &amp; Johnson doses that were supposed to be distributed. They weren't. Just about two weeks ago, we were supposed to get 20,000 doses based on the White House's statements. We did not. So it's unclear where the vaccine is going. Governor DeSantis has distributed directly to the hospitals. So Parrish has received thousands of doses. Health First, Holmes Regional, has received thousands of doses just in the last several weeks. And the Florida Department of Health, in addition to the 3,500 to 3,500, received 4,500, I believe, of the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine a couple of weeks ago. After having been given 2,000 doses of vaccine, which Omni administered in little over two days, about two months ago, we've not received any. That's based on Governor DeSantis's decisions as to how he wants to allocate the vaccines and more recently, the federal government. So I agree with Commissioner Loebur. What we're asking for may not ever happen, but it strikes me as odd that we would, as a community or as a county, pay somebody to distribute vaccine when we're willing to do it at no cost to the county. So I want to thank everybody for their support and for the work you do.
Thank you. Thank you, Doctor. Mr. Mark Babango?
Good morning, everyone, and thank you for taking the time to listen. I'm the administrator at Omni Healthcare, and I just, I wanted to kind of go over the logistics of how we do things. We have multiple locations. We're a physician's facility. And when people come in, they recognize that we know how to do this. We were able to put 1,000 people through in one day, and the congratulations we got from everybody was phenomenal. They can't do these things at Publix. They can't do it at CVS. We just need the opportunity to do it. We just need the vaccines, and we'd appreciate it if you'd consider the proposal. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, Zanka?
Yeah, I don't know if this is a question for the administrator that just walked away or for Mr. Steele or Deligdish. I just had a couple of questions. I understand in the original proposal that you were going to charge the county $20 per administration, like per vaccine, as a kind of a vaccine administration fee.
That's correct.
And that changed in five days from the previous proposal. I was just curious why you changed that.
We'd received some feedback that, that you guys didn't want to pay, and you wanted everything to be free, so we decided just to do it for free.
But it's not free because you're billing insurance companies, correct?
It's free to the county. Yes, we are billing insurance companies.
But it's not free to the people who have the insurance plans. That's just, I just want that clear.
It, it is free to the people that have insurance plans because the insurance is required to pay for that. So there is no copay associated with any of this.
Right, insurance isn't required to pay for it, but under your, what you're offering, it would be.
Yes. So we will not bill any patient for any of this.
And you've pre-registered 20,000 people for the vaccine?
Approximately, yes.
Now, are they knowing when they sign up that you may not get the vaccine? Because my fear is that they're waiting or they're holding off maybe signing up Because my fear is that they're waiting or they're holding off maybe signing up or preregistering somewhere else because they think that they, Omni may call them and say that their vaccine's ready?
They are registering in multiple places, I've been told, and they do know that it's all contingent upon us getting the vaccine, but we've basically saved a place in line for them.
Now, have you guys applied for money directly from the state for COVID funding?
We have not.
Okay. Because I know a lot of, a lot of health systems are able to qualify for that. I'm just curious. I mean, it's probably more of a business decision that you probably don't want to answer publicly, but I'm a little curious because a lot of these health systems have lost money and were able to get state funding, but I'm just not sure why Omni wouldn't be doing that.
It may have to do with the fact that we're a for-profit organization, and some of the hospitals that are not-for-profit are able to get those. I don't know, but we have not applied to the state.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I just received one more comment card.
Just to clarify, insurance companies are required by federal law to pay for vaccination and for testing. Okay? That's, that's a fact.
Thank you.
You can look that up.
But someone, somebody getting a vaccine?
Excuse me, I'm not finished. Excuse me, I'm not finished.
Right, I'm sorry, hold on a minute. I need the commissioner to be able to respond, sir, so.
Right, can I finish?
Well, you already had your time, in all fairness.
Oh, okay, then, I'm sorry.
I have to run everybody exactly the same, so.
Right. It's not required that an insurance company bill to get a vaccine, ever, because we've had a lot of people receive vaccines throughout the county where they received the vaccine at no charge to them or to their health insurance plan. So it's...
Hang on one second.
Hold on. Commissioner Zanka, did you want to have a dialogue, ma'am? I'm sorry.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay. Insurance companies don't bill, insurance companies pay.
Right.
What, could you repeat yourself or clarify what you're trying to say?
I'm saying you do not have to use health insurance to get the vaccine because everybody...
That's right. We could do everything for free, okay?
Correct.
But we, we lose money every year, and we've already invested millions of dollars on testing. So we have the ability, as do the hospitals. So while the hospitals may have told you that they don't charge, insurance companies, I can stand here and tell you for certain that Parish has charged for their testing, okay? And they've received CARES Act money. So, you know, what people say and what people do are two different things. We have not billed the insurance companies for testing, and we have not applied for money because, to our knowledge, we're not able to. We've received government support, as most people have during the pandemic. If we could apply, we would, and we're not saying we won't, but we have not.
I believe the conversation was about vaccines, not, not testing, but, you know, do you want my position on this item?
Ma'am, you have the floor, so I'm just waiting for you to turn it back.
Yeah, I have no problem with us using outside agencies as far as, you know, if, if we're blessed with having more than 8,000 vaccines, which you just don't, you don't, you don't even have to do much research to see that we're not going to get that supply, and we've already vaccinated a large portion of our population, so that's probably not going to happen. The only issue I have, and it's been my issue from the beginning, is fair competition, right? If we're going to allow a private entity, a for-profit entity, to essentially sign up with the county or go into contract with the county, we should probably put this out to RFP, because we technically, or we very clearly have the capacity now to manage what we have, and so we, there would be time enough to do that. So that would be my, my thought on that.
Thank you, ma'am. I do have one more comment card, so Mr. Burns, you put in a card on this item, sir? And then Mr. Loeb, you're next, sir. Commissioner Loeb? No, it is Neil. Okay.
Robert Burns-Vierra, and I just want to echo some of the same concerns that Commissioner Zanka has brought up. When I was reading this item through the agenda pack, that I was kind of taken back by the tone of the emails between Mr. Denninghoff and the Omni's office, basically demanding to be paid by the county to administer these vaccinations, and in the same breath, talking about they're doing a community service. There are many organizations in this, in this county that are doing a community service by providing this vaccine at no cost to the county or no cost to the patients and not asking for it to be paid that way, and some are not even, is my understanding, being reimbursed through insurance. Omni is asking, or did ask, for all of those things. What is more concerning to me, however, is that they've pre-scheduled 20,000 patients for a vaccine that they do not have. His email says they are scheduled. They're scheduled for what date? Because if you just, if you type in Omni vaccine or Omni testing in Facebook, you will see dozens upon dozens of posts of patient complaints of our elderly population being scheduled and rescheduled up to three times, not by themselves, but by the Omni staff for vaccines that Omni does not have. It's my understanding that they are the only organization that is scheduling patients for vaccines that they do not have. The county, Health First, Publix, CVS, Winn-Dixie, any of those other places are not scheduling until they have the product at hand. That is a potential negative outcome for patients because our elderly population is having a hard time, as it is, to schedule vaccinations, but now they are under the false premise that they have one scheduled for an organization that doesn't even have it in their hands and doesn't know when they're going to get it, but continues to reschedule these, this, our most vulnerable population. So it is my opinion that this is not needed. We have the resources in the county, and we have the resources through the private businesses, more than enough, to facilitate the demand and the supply that we already have for the county. We don't need to be in business with the county for someone who is looking to profit, as he stated, that he is a for-profit business on, during this pandemic. That is just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Loeb?
A few things. A few things. First, God, I really hate to focus on someone that has an issue with the truth, but to say that Omni's proposal involved a cost to the county and a cost to patients, I've never heard anything involving a cost to patients from Omni. As for the cost to the county, yeah, their, their initial proposal did have a cost to the county. I don't know that anyone was in favor of approving that, as to their Merritt Island vaccination site at least. But our contract with Caliburn that we had no problem putting in place does cost the county money were we to activate it. So it's, it's not that it's unique in any sense. I do agree that there should be parity in terms of what's paid and what's able to be charged, but again, we're talking about a question that, as I mentioned in the beginning, may never reach fruition, may never end up being anything other than moot. And I do remember when we approved allocating $2 million to increase capacity, what we were told at the time, both by staff and by FDOH staff, was that the number of shots that we receive hinges on a couple of things in particular. One, what we do with the shots that we've already gotten, namely, do we get them in arms quickly? Hillsborough didn't, and we ended up getting some of Hillsborough's vaccines. The other thing that I was told was of very high importance as well, was what is our capacity if they were looking at potentially giving us more? If we don't have the capacity to get those shots in arms, they're not going to give us more. So, you know, obviously, we've been doing a good job in this county of getting the shots that we receive in arms. I think we're in a good spot as far as capacity, but we can be in a better spot as far as capacity is concerned. You know, as far as Omni's initial proposal to charge 20 bucks at one of the three sites, namely, the Merritt Island site, it is what it is. They made the proposal. I can tell you from my perspective, I gave their lobbyist feedback that, you know, I wasn't thrilled with that. They turned around and they removed it. I'm not saying on account of my feedback, I'm sure on account of several individuals' feedback. Now, you know, that said, all of this that we're talking about as far as the concern over them preregistering, it doesn't go toward whether or not we should support this, whether you like it, whether you don't like it. To me, it makes no difference in whether or not we approve them insofar as being able to contract with the county. Pre-registering, I've never heard in any way obligate someone from refraining to obtain or refraining from seeking a vaccine from another source. All that we're hearing about as far as the concerns is purely hypothetical. We don't even have anecdotal evidence that a single person has foregone a vaccine because they preregistered with Omni. You know, it certainly, the whole registration system, not just locally, not just statewide, but nationwide at least, has been a fiasco. We have people that are in these high-risk groups, some of whom are not very computer-literate, who are having to refresh constantly and basically live on a computer. I don't know that that's any better than preregistering. If there's a way to save them a spot in line, and it's that much easier for them, and they're still allowed to go out and play the lottery, so to speak, to see if they can get a shot elsewhere, so be it. I mean, it is what it is. Like I said, I, I don't care if it's Omni or it's Alpha or Atme or whatever they want to call it. If it's a facility or it's a practice that's able to get those shots in arms, you know, my thought is, if there's not a reason to preclude them from doing it, why would we stand in their way? Like I said, it's, Medfast is fine, Omni's fine, any of them that have the capability to do it, great. On the other hand, if we had, you know, Bob Shots Incorporated, where it's, you know, one guy operating out of his garage that doesn't have the ability to give thousands of shots, I would have a different opinion, but all we're doing is basically saying to them, "Look, we're going to, we're going to contract with you such that when you make your pitch to the state, that you should get vaccines. In the event, if it ever happens that we get more than 8,000, you know, we have a contract and therefore we've, we've checked that box." It may make it easier for them. I think that's really all that we're doing, is we're enabling them to make their pitch down the road.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And it's been said on a couple of occasions, there's no financial impact on the county. So with your indulgence, ma'am, please ask Mr. Darling a question. Mr. Darling, my understanding is we're a self-insured employer. Is that fair to say?
Yes, sir.
So in other words, should Omni go forward with this and bill the insurer, that would be us, the county, and thus taxpayers? Is that a fair conjecture?
Yes, sir, it is.
Thank you.
That was exactly going to be my point. We can keep saying no cost to the patients, but there's a cost to their plan, and that they're therefore a cost to the employer, a cost to the employees as a whole. So, I mean, I think that's a false, it's a false narrative to say that there's no cost to the patients. I don't know if the commission would be interested in putting this out, opening up for everyone. Does the county believe that they need this extra contract? I guess would be the question. I mean, I know we have Caliburn. Do we need another distributor?
I can, I can actually re, one thing that I can state is, you know, nobody knows how it's going to change from day to day, but currently, at the current time, the state is primarily allocating the vaccine directly to the healthcare entities that are enrolled in Florida shots. Omni is, Caliburn is, Medfast is, there's many, many agencies, including our independent pharmacies, that are. So due to the fragility of the vaccine, they really do prefer to ship it directly to the individuals giving the vaccine. As I say that, that's not to say that we can't transfer. If we had an overabundance of vaccines, we could certainly transfer to anyone, regardless if there's a contract with the county or not, because we can do that within Florida shots. However, we do have to have state approval to do that. So, and, and we are doing that right now with a few of the municipalities that are helping us out tremendously doing that. So I guess I'm rambling on, and I don't know your original, forget, even forget what your original question was, but if there is an overabundance of vaccines, if we got tons of thousands of vaccines, that's beyond our capability, we definitely need to give it out to individuals to give. We know Omni can do it, we know Medfast can do it, we know some of the independent pharmacies can do it, we know some of the private providers and other urgent cares can do it. So, did that answer your question?
I think so. But the crux of it is, is I mean, I mean, they only have so much supply, assuming that the entire, assuming that the state of Florida got all this supply in the United States, at least right now, I don't foresee us even having close to not being able to manage the supply that comes in because there just isn't the supply. It's not that, you know, we're gifted with tens of thousands of vaccines, it's just not there.
Right. You're correct.
Because more, and the higher percent, what are we at as far as percentage goes for vaccinated in the county?
Right now, our over 65, age over 65 is at 61%,
That's incredible.
which is actually pretty good. Our over 50 is 40%, which is still, still fairly good. But you're correct. The vaccine is limited, the vaccine coming to us is limited, but the state truly is, you know, we are, the last couple of weeks, we've gotten 3,500 doses, but the vaccine coming into, to our county is probably close to 10,000.
But the state can directly give to Omni, correct?
The state is, state is directing that, giving it to Health First, giving it to Stewart, giving it to Parish, giving it to the pharmacies. So, and, and then they give to us, too.
And the state can choose to give to Omni, correct?
Correct. Absolutely. And they did, early on, they did.
Exactly.
Omni got 2,000 doses early on. So absolutely, because they are a Florida shots provider.
Thank you, Maria.
Commissioner Smith, do you want to weigh in?
Not really. I, I just, if Omni wants to give shots and people want to use Omni to get their shots, then Omni should do the shots. I'm not going to begrudge them or anybody else because they want to charge 20 bucks if, if that's the way it works out. I get what you're saying, Commissioner Zanka, and, but the fact is, we're dealing with a pandemic, and a lot of people feel comfortable going to Walmart versus Walgreens and CVS versus Omni, and so people have the choice. So if we add one more vendor to the list, good for the people.
Okay, I, I think I probably agree with you, sir. And I don't know if they'll ever get an opportunity, but they do. And as far as the fair market, I, if anybody puts in, then they're qualified. I'm going to vote in favor of them being able to distribute the shots, too, if we have an excess amount. So Commissioner Loeb, you had a motion on the table. Commissioner Tobias, did you want to comment, sir?
Yes, Madam Chair. I'm okay with Omni providing the shots, as Commissioner Smith, Smith mentioned. However, I think it should be done, as Commissioner Loeb mentioned, on parity. If they are willing to offer the same parameters that Parish, Wustoff and Health First has, I would have absolutely no problem, but the fact that there could be a direct cost to the county and thus taxpayers, I don't think, I would feel comfortable providing them that opportunity and not providing the same opportunity for the healthcare systems that have already said they would not charge the county.
Okay. Commissioner Loeb, I'm still probably in, in favor of it, just because I know all this is our tax dollars anyways. If you don't think we're paying taxes on all these things, regardless, we, we definitely are, and I know that's with health insurances. So again, if, if they had it available and it was close to me, I would, I would go to them and do it, and even do a copay myself, so just the opportunity to have it. Commissioner Loeb, you have a motion on the table?
Just a couple of things that I made before you vote.
Well, if, if we could just go through it here, I think we're about there.
Okay.
So if I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Passes three to two. Mr. Darling?
Ma'am, can you clarify from the agenda item what the motion is, because there were three different options?
Certainly. Commissioner Loeb?
Let me pull the item here, but the, the bottom line is we wanted you to contract with Omni to enable them to be able to say that, that they are contracted with the county to provide shots. In terms of the specific questions, just so that we're all on the same page, why don't, Mr. Darling, if you don't mind, why don't we go over them and we'll, we'll just ensure that the folks that voted the affirmative are, are on the same page?
So the first option would be to direct staff to negotiate with Omni Healthcare a contract that is consistent with the contracts executed already with the local hospital systems in Caliburn. The second option was to accept the revised proposal as submitted by Omni Healthcare and direct staff to draft a contract based on that proposal. And then the third option was to reject the Omni proposal as submitted.
So we're definitely not in the third boat. I think that's pretty clear. In terms of the, the first two, where are you two at, Commissioner Smith and Chair?
I thought you were making number two, sir.
I just want to make sure we're not, I, I don't want to speak for someone else, but, you know, I'm, I'm comfortable with that. You know, the, the bottom line, Madam Chair, is this is, I mean, this is just setting up the structure. If FDOH wants to take a look and say, okay, they have different factors than we do, if they have a, a less expensive alternative that can do the same, by all means. But I, I don't, I mean, RFP, from my understanding, is when you're looking for a single provider you're looking for a single provider or a provider to take care of something, this is a little different in that I think we've discussed, both from a capacity standpoint and an accessibility standpoint, we want as many people as possible that are able to provide the shots, providing the shots. So I'm okay with that. I am.
I thought that was your motion when you made it with what they put in.
Are you all right, Commissioner Smith?
Yeah. Yeah. You ladies have that?
I saw a question.
Yes, ma'am.
And here it says Omni may seek administrative assistance in submitting applications from these federal sources. Are they expecting county assistance with that?
They did not clarify, ma'am.
I think we probably need clarity if we're going to vote in favor of their own, of Omni's proposal. I think we probably need clarity before the commission votes to give them county resources.
And from my standpoint, I took that to mean that they may seek it on their own. I didn't presume that to mean the county. And that's where I'd be more comfortable.
Yeah, I didn't read that into it either. So.
I heard an answer in the affirmative from Mr. Steele.
Okay. So when we motioned, voted on that, we didn't motion for the county to do any administrative work on this?
No.
No? Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we're going to move into item H1.
Good morning, Commissioners. I have a public utility and drainage easement for Twin Lakes at Suntree. Property owner, Mr. Morion, District 4. And they are looking to, they're requesting the vacating of a four-foot portion of the easement for the construction of a pool. We have no issues from a drainage perspective and no comments received by our office.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Loeb. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes five zero. Thank you, sir. Moving into item H2.
Madam Chair, I've got some disclosures. If you'd like me to go over them now?
I would love for you to do that, sir. Thank you.
All right. These have already been provided in print to the clerk. On the 16th, and these are all in March of this year, on the 16th of the month, I had a discussion by phone with Ms. Rosenka, who does represent the applicant. Three days later, on the 19th, my office email had received, an email containing some attachments that were signed petitions from the residents opposing the proposal. The individual that sent them to me, or at least the name on the account, was Julie U., like uniform. There was no extension to the U., though, so I don't know what the U. stands for. And then on the 22nd, three days after, we received another email, this one from Ms. Rosenka regarding changes to the BDP. That's all I've got on this.
Thank you, sir. And I submitted all of mine in written as well. Commissioner Tobias, did you want to?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had a phone call from Ms. Rosenka concerning H2 yesterday.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, I just wanted to reveal that I spoke to Ms. Rosenka on Thursday, the 19th. And my office has already forwarded the information regarding the emails.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Zonka?
And mine would be March the 17th with Ms. Kim Rosenka.
Thank you, ma'am. And I had numerous meetings, so I submitted them all in paperwork for public record. Sirs?
Item H2 is 5971 Cedar Lake Drive Revocable Land Trust and U.S. Highway Number One Commercial Land Trust, request a change of classification from RU-1-11 TR-2 and BU-1 with a BDP to TR-1 with a BDP limited to 150 units. Application number is 20Z00036. The application is located in District 1, which is Commissioner Pritchett. Just so the board understands that the applicant has provided a revised BDP as of yesterday afternoon, with the addition of a fence on the property adjacent to any residentially zoned property. The developer/owner will provide a 15-foot perimeter buffer tract along all property boundaries, which shall be platted as a common tract, separate from individual lots. And number seven, developer/owner shall limit access to Cedar Lake Drive to an emergency access for the benefit of Brevard County with a lock gate if required by Brevard County or due to any existing easement encumbering the property. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Rosenka?
Thank you. My name is Kim Rosenka. I am with the Office of Lacy Lyons and Rosenka in Rockledge, Florida. I'm here on behalf of the two trust property owners and of the developer/contract purchaser home and project administration represented here by Nick Dettore. Also with me today is John Shepherd with Atlantic Environmental, who will talk right after me regarding the environmental issues that have been raised by the neighbors and the studies that he has done and that are ongoing. This is in Port St. John. It is an infill development. It's intended for affordable housing. It actually is in what they call a federal opportunity zone, tract 621.07, which does provide some incentives for affordable housing. I want to thank you for your time in advance of reviewing this. I know you've received numerous emails and meetings, and you've all taken the time to speak with me. And I want to thank you for that. There is a good deal of opposition to this, and it's believed that people just don't want change. This has been approved for development since 1990. And then also in 2006, that was repeated. There were binding development plans in 1990 and 2006 that limited 51 acres to 154 lots of 7,500 square feet each. There's also seven acres of BU-1 that we're also asking to be changed to TR-1 that has been there for a long time behind Winn-Dixie. This project has never been developed, and it actually went into foreclosure. If you all remember, in 2006, developers would put almost anything in a binding development plan because people were buying anything and the costs were so high. And that was a detriment to the developer in 2006. Mr. Dettore has heard the, Dettore has heard the concerns of the residents and has made numerous changes to the BDP, as Mr. Ball has described. I just provided you the binding development plan. I know this was sent to you late yesterday. And many changes have been made since this was first put forth, beginning with, we thought 200 units could go into this 58 acres. After hiring MBV Engineering and doing a concept plan, we learned that wasn't possible. So hopefully to reduce some concerns of the neighbors, we reduced it to 150 units. Then at planning and zoning, on March 8th, the issue came up of sewer and septic. And we agreed to put into the binding development plan that this would not be developed if it was not on sewer. There is a problem with sewer capacity in the county, so the developer is going to bring sewer from city, from Camp Road, at his own cost. Then yesterday, three more changes were made, that there will be the 15-foot perimeter buffer tract along all property boundaries, which will be platted as a common tract, separate from individual lots, that the developer shall limit access to Cedar Lake Drive to an emergency access with a lock gate if required by Brevard County. The developer does not want to use Cedar Lake Drive if it doesn't need to, but because of the concerns of so many easements on this property and whether Brevard County might want this because of the gas lines and transmission lines on this property. So if we do not need an emergency access, there will not be one. But if there's one required, it will have a locked gate and for emergency use only. So traffic should not impact Cedar Lake Drive. And the other is that there will be a six-foot-high opaque fence. It used to be a buffer. Now it'll be a fence on the property adjacent to any residentially zoned property. So the RU-111 to the, actually RU-19 to the north, the TR-1 to the south, and the TR-2 to the south and the TR-1 to the east will all have a six-foot-high opaque fence that will be in, after, be on the other side of the 15-foot perimeter buffer tract. So those changes were made. All other issues that have been raised by the residents are site plan issues, as you all are very familiar with. The remaining differences between the 1990/2006 BDP and the current planned development are still several, most of them good. First, this is a much less dense development. It is 150 units on 58 acres. Before, it was 154 units on 51 acres. So this is 2.6 units to the acre, which is less dense than the properties to the north, the Port St. John Unit 1 flat. The new BDP did not include roadway improvements to Clearview Drive, mostly because we don't know what engineering is going to require regarding grade. That was done a long time ago. So engineering will review it as to whether improvements are needed on Cedar Lake Drive, excuse me, on Clearview Drive. Also, there are turn lanes already exist. I've provided them out to the clerk and to the chairman. So there are, these turn lanes already do exist that was in the prior BDP. The other condition was landscaping on the right, landscaping in the right-of-way on Clearview Drive. And that would need a right-of-way permit and irrigation in the road. And regardless that would, right-of-way, and this was something if the developer wanted it. So we did not put it in the new BDP because we don't know if we want it or need it. The other difference is there is a considerable amount of reduction of potential traffic to this area. 154 standard single-family homes at 9.55 trips per day is 14,071 a day. When you add the seven-acre shopping center at approximately 56,000 square feet, based upon what the Winn-Dixie is, you have at 4,295 trips per thousand square foot, you have 2,405 per day. So that 58 acres could indeed put 3,876 trips per day onto the US-1 in that area. Whereas now we're taking that 58 acres, putting 150 manufactured homes at 4.67 trips per day, or 700 a day. So it's a reduction of 3,100 trips per day. And this is based on the 2016 ITE traffic manual, because that's all I could find on the internet. I know it's been updated, but they don't change that much. Also, the difference is the buffer fence for all residential neighbors. Now, as to the similarities of this development with the surrounding neighborhoods, first, the size of the lots to the north and to the east are the same, 7,500 square feet. The setbacks for the rear are the same, at 20 feet. They are all single-family homes. The use is single-family homes. Neighbors have complained about they look different, but they're still single-family homes. These are going to be two-bedroom, two-bath and three-bedroom, two-bath. The retail value of these brand-new homes that we're going in here will range between $90,000 and $120,000. I've sent you all pictures of what these are going to look like. They look like traditional homes. They're going to be on concrete pads. They're going to be anchored to the ground. And they're going to have carports. The developer has, the value of the homes, okay. Other considerations for you are that there are many engineers and experts that have been hired to assist with this program, with this project. There is a reputable environmental consultant, John Shepherd, with Atlantic Environmental, which will talk to you next about his studies and the mitigation that could be required. And again, are site plan issues. There's going to be sewer brought to this development, so there'll be no more septic tanks. Most of the residents' concerns are site plan and engineering concerns. The developer has hired MBV Engineering and also Susan Hall, the landscape architect, to make sure that the landscaping is done properly and trees are mitigated. Also, this has been built to withstand 100 mile-an-hour storm. The homes are going to likely be Palm Harbor homes. This flyer has been given to the commissioner, and I'm going to submit it also to the clerk. And it details how these Palm Harbor homes withstood Hurricane Andrew, Hurricane Charlie, the Nisqually earthquake in Washington, Hurricane Ike, Hurricane Ivy, Hurricane Irma, and Hurricane Michael. It's very impressive the way these are built. And if you have questions, Mr. Dettore can detail them for you how they're built, because he has actually toured the site where they are built. To summarize, this project is an improvement over what could have been built in 2006 or 1990. There's no evidence this will cause a material reduction in value of budding lands. In fact, the value of these new homes are greater than what's to the south and to the east. It's a residential use, just like those around it, and no levels of service will be compromised. On request approval, the zoning to TR-1, removal of the old BDP, and approval of the conditions in the brand-new BDP in front of you. And with that, I'd ask Mr. Shepherd to come up to speak about the environmental issues.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello. I'm John Shepherd with Atlantic Environmental. My company has worked on this project since 2006, not for Mr. Dettore, but for the past donors as well. And since that time, we've determined what environmental issues are out here. There are really two major issues. And I'll bring up a third issue, which has been brought up by the residents. May I go ahead and address that now? And that's the bald eagle. As far as I know, and as far as we've seen, there have been no bald eagles on this property. The nearest known mapped bald eagle's nest is about a mile and a half away. The second issue, which is a real concern, is tortoises. We've completed a 15% tortoise survey and estimated that there are about 106 potentially occupied tortoise burrows out there on the site, which equates to approximately 53 individual tortoises out there. The applicant will obtain a permit to relocate these tortoises prior to development, so no harm will be done to the tortoises. The last and final issue are scrub jays. Back in 2007, my company actually permitted scrub jay impacts on this site, and we received a habitat conservation plan from U.S. Fish at that time. As part of that habitat conservation plan, the owner at that time was supposed to have paid a large fee to allow the impact of the scrub jays. That fee was never made at that time, and so therefore, that permit expired, and here we are today. We've completed so far three of five required survey dates out there on the property, and thus far have found no scrub jays on the property. We have two additional days to go. And once we complete that fifth day, at that time, we can go to U.S. Fish and give them our results, and they can come down, verify our results if jays are there or not, which again, at this time, we don't, they don't appear to be there. And if there are no jays there at this time, then no additional permitting will be required from U.S. Fish.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
I have Ms. Julie Yorick. And then Thomas Armstat will be next, sir. Ma'am, if you would state your name.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Julie Lynn Alrich. I'm the Julie U. I apologize for that. I have a couple of questions for Ms. Rosenka, or the board, please.
You can write, she'll write notes, and she'll come up and I'm sure address them.
Okay. She continues to say that we don't like change, that we're so used to comfort zone and everything, so on and so forth. The problem is, I don't mind change. I want block homes there. I've seen the hurricanes. I've seen what happens. I would just like to have block homes. I'll buy one. The other thing is, how do they come up with a number of trips with a block home versus a single-wide mobile home? I've gone through all the mobile home areas. Each one has two to three cars. Block homes have two to three cars. The other thing is, at the meeting that they had with the community, you cannot buy these mobile homes. They're only for renters. You can't buy the land. You can't buy the trailer. I have an issue with that. I own my home. And the surrounding area, they own their homes. And I thank you, because you've received my email, the Julie U. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie U. Mr. Thomas Armstat, and then Thomas McFarland, you'll be next, sir. If you would state your name and address for the record, sir.
Thomas Armstat, 5941 Cedar Lake Drive. One of my concerns was the access to Cedar Lake Drive, which the new binding development plan proposed, would seem to take care of. The old binding development plan for that had a stipulation that the property would be divided in half down the middle of the access, and each given to the property owners on the east and the west. I don't know if that's in the new one. That would guarantee, they wouldn't come along later and put a road in there. My main objection was all of the traffic. The fact that the people farther than 500 feet away were not notified that they were going to potentially have a ton of extra traffic. Also, the point of changing the RU-111 to TR-1 was brought up 30 years ago. They proposed making a TR-1, and the residents proposed making a TR-2, which is where I live, it's all TR-2, because of reduced density. The county commissioner, at that time, approved the RU-111 because they did not want mobile homes in that area because of the significant damage done mobile homes in that area because of the significant damage done by hurricanes. And the fact that closer they are together, if a piece peels off one mobile home, it swishes through the air and smacks into the next, and starts tearing it up. I've seen pictures, I haven't fortunately been in that situation, but I've seen pictures where the entire area was destroyed, all of the mobile homes in that area. What happens is one starts falling apart, and as the pieces blow off it, it destroys the one next to it, and the pieces fall off that one, destroys the one next to it. So the further apart these mobile homes are, or in this case, manufactured homes are, the less likely they are to be damaged by hurricanes. That's why they originally wanted the RU one-eleven, was to prevent mobile homes, you know, put their own wheels, set up for safety measures. And although this developer may have perfect intentions, if for some reason he fails to develop it, if the designation is changed to TR one, there'd be another developer come right along behind him, who does not need to ask for permission. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I have Mr. Thomas McFarland, then Jose Codis. Mr. McFarland?
Good morning. My name is Tom McFarland. I live in Port St. John. And my comments today, we had our home built in ten-ninety-nine Vineland Street in Port St. John in nineteen-seventy-six. My contractor told me that the property behind ours was set aside for block homes. That was true at the time, and I based my decision to build there because of the county's rules at the time. Yes, the landowner has the right to develop their land, but they should do so within the county's guidelines and its current binding development plan. It should not be changed to accommodate the landowner. His request for rezoning will have serious negative impacts on the homes along Vineland Street in Port St. John. This was a primary concern of mine when I contracted a local builder to place our new home in, on Vineland Street. I was assured that only similar homes could be built on the adjoining property. The developers of this project, they seem to make comparisons to homes in Clearview and not Port St. John, which are clearly not the same thing. And they seem to make claims that the homeowners that live on Vineland Street are biased against the people that may live there. And that is not a concern of our, our concern was based strictly on the structures that would be there. In regards to the many, they said many emails were sent to the contractor, to the commission, and that many of these people lived miles from this, where this is going to be. And my thing was, my son would live there eventually. He does not live there. He lives several miles away from there, but he will eventually live on that property. My concern now is that any of the homes along that street that adjoined the property, anyone that could sell their home now, would, anybody considering buying their homes would walk away from it after this thing is built. The homeowner of the property absolutely has the right to develop his land. We believe that the B D P was put in place for a reason and should stay as it is now. We respectfully ask that the current, that, excuse me, we respectfully ask that the request for rezoning be denied, and that current zoning remain in effect. Thank you very much for considering and comment.
Thank you, Mr. McFarland.
If you'd state your name for the record. Jose Codis. I'm here to, I guess, influence you to keep the original binding plan. It's pretty specific on what needs to be done with, with the property in detail. Anything that has been brought up to change it is almost in the old one, from two-thousand-six, two-thousand-seven binding rule, or binding plan is detailed. What needs to change? It should stay the way it is. And just seeing what's on the old one, and not seeing what's on the new one, I can't, you know, tell you what to do with that. But I do see, I did read the old one, and it was detailed on what needs to happen with the property, all the way from the Cedar entrance to the Clear Lake entrance, to the property, and what A P L property is there, what needs to happen there. So it's pretty detailed, and I recommend, suggest, influence you hopefully, to stay with the old one. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. John Shepherd, and then Mr. Zach Briganti. Oh, okay, must have had you twice. Oh, never mind. All right, Mr. Zach, and then Ms. Maureen Root.
My name, excuse me, my name, oh, I don't know if you want to start the-
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Hi, my name is Zach Briganti. Thank you for having me. I live on Vineland Street, and, you know, we've been through, this is the third of these now, and I didn't come with some pre-written speech or anything for this one, but the homes on Vineland Street would be affected by this, because, you know, they're single-family block homes, some reaching, you know, three, four-hundred thousand dollars in appraisal. So I heard the, you know, that it could, that it could positively affect, or impact the houses to the south, the houses to the east, or the, you know, the communities. But the ones to the north, that's my backyard. That's where I will be looking out and now seeing single-family mobile homes. So there's been all kinds of things, you know, we could talk about the hurricanes coming through, and there, I mean, there's just so many reasons, in my eyes, biased or not, yes, that's my, my home, my investment, that I had an appraisal done in January at three-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand dollars. So to have a ninety-thousand-dollar mobile home that close to my backyard just really concerns me. But, you know, I had brought stats with me to the, to the planning and zoning meeting about, according to the property appraiser's office, how the number of single-family block homes were affected by Hurricane Irma in two-thousand-seventeen, as opposed to the mobile homes. And there, there was twenty-two times as many single-family block homes in Brevard County, yet nine times as many mobile homes were destructed, had destruction in that hurricane than, than single-family homes. So we're just asking, if this ends up going through, you know, a larger buffer to the north, maybe eliminate that, that northern section of this community, because, you know, the scrub jays, I see them in the backyard. I'm no bird expert. The gopher turtles, yes, the exact number, I can't tell you. That was a fifteen percent. I guess they just multiply it by whatever to figure out how many there are. But without the M A I survey to prove that this would decrease the value of my home, it's all speculation. You know, if you were to buy a house of my, you know, look at my house, or look at another, and the backyard view was single-family mobile home, it might not decrease the value, but you may go for the other option, right? I mean, we've all watched these, these House Hunter, these shows, where they go after ones for certain reasons. They may be the same price point, but that's just what I, you know, I don't have concern about many other things, aside from really just the property value along Vineland Street. And, you know, I did, I did my best to rally, rally the community together, because, yeah, only five-hundred feet of residents received this notice. So I want you all to take into consideration the outreach from the community. I don't know, compared to other, to other examples, if this was overwhelming or not, but just take into consideration the community. I feel like they've spoken, and do what's right, and keep the original binding development plan. And then if it's, if not, consider a larger buffer to the backyards of the homes on Vineland Street, please. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Morning, commissioners. Maureen Root, seventy-one eighty-five Bright Avenue in Port St. John. I must, at first, I must protest at this different, well, that is being told to the different boards. When we had, I am on the Port St. John Special District Board. When we had our meeting, according to Ms. Rosanka, the applicant had two environmental assessments of the property, but neither had been given to the county or the recommending boards. Ms. Rosanka stated there were no scrub jays on site, but neighbors testified to seeing them daily. She also stated that there were gopher tortoises on site that would be relocated, except the ones that are diseased, and they would be buried. I challenged this, as I knew that it was illegal to bury a gopher tortoise, and it takes up to six months for the creature to die. At the county P and Z board, she retracted this statement about entombing, but here, there was two different statements made to two different boards. And where did this information come from? Since she stated there were two environmental assessments, and I know both sources are reputable, I'd like to know where Ms. Rosanka's false information was from. There are also people in the adjoining properties that are concerned about their home values. The attorney's answer was that it was purely speculative, and there was no proof that adjoining mobile homes would depreciate a person's property. Let me ask you, commissioners, common sense here, or any realtor. And this mobile home park is to be on the Atlantic Ridge, point four miles at the closest point to the Indian River Lagoon. At the Port St. John Board, it was stated if sewer's not available, the homes would be on septic. Based on the distance from the Indian River Lagoon, it must be stated in the binding development plan that if sewer is not available, the homes will be on advanced septic systems. We are already paying a self-imposed tax to clean the Indian River Lagoon. And lastly, these were told at a public meeting of the residents, that, that these will be rental properties. These hundred-and-fifty mobile homes would be rentals. We already have a bad problem, a contentious problem, in the county over rentals on our beaches and our waterways. I just don't think this is a good idea, and I do, I do not like different things. We did not know, we weren't told about the changes. And we come down here, we don't know these changes have been made by the attorney and the, the owner of the property. And to tell different things to three different boards, which is what has happened, I don't know, there's something wrong. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Root. Ms. Rosanka, you have some time left, ma'am.
Thank you, Chairman. Members of the county commission, I was expecting more speakers, so I wasn't quite paying attention. I want to start with Ms. Root. Ms. Root, at the Port St. John Special District Meeting, actually polled the audience and asked people if they were opposed to this, that's why they were there. And she and I had a little disagreement over whether that was proper, and we all know that it's not. Ms. Maureen Root says that the stories are different. Well, as you know, things change over time. We've heard the concerns of the residents, we've heard the concerns of you all, so now all homes are on sewer. That's been in the public record for quite a long time, if Ms. Root had looked at Legisdar and looked at the public record. So that's been available for quite a long time. The stories are not different, rental or not rental, doesn't matter, they're still homes, they're still single-family use. As to the gopher turtles and turmans, that was my mistake. Y'all remember, that used to be the policy until two-thousand-eight, and then two-thousand-ten, it completely changed, and it could not be done. But I did say we would follow whatever the rules were from Florida, from Florida Wildlife Commission. And that is what will be done, and John Shepherd will make sure that is being done. As to Ms. Ulrich, Ms. Ulrich lives at five-nine-six-five Cedar Lake Drive, to the south of the property. She lives in a manufactured home built in nineteen-eighty-seven, of square footage of about thirteen-hundred square feet. I'm a little surprised she doesn't want new manufactured homes nearby. I received her information from George Masalano, a public records request, and I will submit that to the clerk. The trips are from the I T E manual, this will all also be done, the trips through the site plan, and these are commonly used trip manual, generation trips, and again, very well-known. They are rent-to-own homes, and that is true, but they will be able to be purchased, most likely after five years. Mr. Armstat has hurricanes concerns. Again, this is going to be all new construction. They're built to HUD standards, built to withstand a hundred-mile-an-hour winds. This RU one-eleven was done thirty years ago in nineteen-ninety, and conditions have changed since that time. The fact this property hasn't been developed shows an issue that needs to be changed, the zoning needs to be changed, and there's case law to support that. The sewer regulations have changed, the environmental conditions have changed, environmental regulations have changed, and the property went into foreclosure. Mr. McFarland built his house forty-five years ago. The zoning was changed in nineteen-ninety. I have never seen anything, I've actually never seen a B D P that requires block homes. They could be wood homes or other kind of homes. Regarding emails far away, I believe that could be attributed to Ms. Lisa McCarthy. She sent an email, apparently to anyone she knew, asking that they contact Rita Pritchett. And if you'll notice, in your emails, in your packet, there are probably thirty emails, let's say, email campaign, which is what Lisa McCarthy titled hers, and the language is exactly the same. And some of these are from north of Kings Highway, some of them are three miles to the west, and they are not competent substantial evidence, they're speculations, and again, saying they don't want change. Mr. Codis says he doesn't know what the new B D P says. It's been restated to you by Mr. Ball and by me. Again, things change over times to make it better. This is a much better B D P than you had before. It does protect the Cedar Lake Drive individuals. It protects the environment through sewer, and all environmental other concerns will be addressed. Again, we would ask that you approve this rezoning to TR one. We ask that you approve the B D P in concept with the conditions as so stated, recognizing that all of the road issues will be addressed through environment, through engineering and site plan, and construction drawings at the time, improvements will likely have to be made to Cedar Lake Drive because of sidewalks and other things of that nature, and the developer will do whatever the county tells him to do. With that, we'd ask that you approve this. If you have any questions of me, of Mr. Shepherd, or Mr. Dettore, we're here to answer questions.
Thank you, ma'am. This is in my desk.
This is in my district, so I'm going to go ahead and make a few comments first. The first thing I want to mention is when we're making these decisions, I try to balance protecting the existing residents and then allowing the property owner his right to use his property. I've got to make a little analysis here. As far as the manufactured homes going in, it really doesn't concern me. We live in a nice neighborhood, and they put manufactured houses behind our houses, and they're actually pretty nice, and they've been there for about 17 years now, and they've stood up very nice, and nice neighbors behind us. So that really wasn't anything that I had a concern over. I've watched all of the meetings. I went ahead and tuned in to the Port St. John, and then I watched the planning and zoning. So I've paid a lot of attention to this, and I think the change has actually been for the better. I like the way this thing has kind of improved the situation for the residents. And I like that it's less dense, the sewer's a good thing. And my main thing was, is if we were going to change the zoning on this, the zoning that was on there, there was a 15-foot track and then a 20-foot setback. And if we would have changed this, it wouldn't have had it. But that's now been added into the new BDP. Ms. Ruzanka has worked with us before, so she kind of knew, I'm sure, what would be asked for. So she actually set out the new BDP here. I am liking that it didn't use the Cedar Lake exit. I was going to ask for that not to happen because the Clear Lake one has already been set up for the exit out of this area. And as far as the BDP before, there's already a left and a right turn lane coming out of there, and you will have to address a lot of things through the county. There's still a lot of hoops to jump through. I was going to request that a six-foot fence be put up, you know, with that track buffer around all the existing residentials, and they put it in that BDP as well. So what this has is it's pulled the development away from existing development. It has added a bigger setback with the buffer. There is a natural buffer as well as a fence width that you can't see through. And so I think there's been a lot of very positive changes. I think we've come to a place now that it is protecting the existing homeowners. And I think that there has been some good changes to convince me that this has now become a good project for this area. There's a lot of, I think, vagrant travel in this area right now. I think that's going to help cut that back. And I do agree that if we would have put other options in there, that the traffic would have been a little bit more severe. So this has kind of encompassed in the middle of this. I'm hoping by the time we're done with this, you guys won't even know there's development back there after this. Commissioner Lober, I believe you were next, and then Commissioner Smith.
I appreciate it. I just want to say, and I thank you for having jumped in first, this to me is like the majority of the zoning issues that come up. If it's something in my district, I'll tell you, my answer may be one way or the other, but when it comes to someone else's district, it takes almost an act of God for me not to go the same way as their commissioner. I think in the little over two years that I've been here, I've probably done it less than once a year. And those were very, very, very extenuating. And I think, in fact, in both instances that come to mind, the commissioner essentially said, you know, "Don't worry about how I'm voting, you know, vote whatever you think is appropriate", or "Vote your conscience", or something along those lines, which I took as essentially license to put aside my normal practice of supporting or rejecting in accordance with whatever the district's commissioner believes. The fact is, I live in District Two, I work in District Two. I will never know another district, pardon me, as well as I know my own. I'm confident that our commission chair, Commissioner Pritchett, is well aware of what the needs, the benefits, and the detriments are. And as a result, I'm going to support a decision in this as I would, I think, every other zoning matter that's come up, up to this date at least.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to interject the fact that this developer is my kind of developer. He's spending money out of his own pocket to bring in sewer. Anybody, any developer that brings in sewers has a leg up, as far as I'm concerned, because for me, it's about the environment, and there's no excuse not to have sewer in this day and age. So I just wanted to add that.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, can I have a motion?
No move.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Lober. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. Passes 5-0. Thank you, guys all.
That was with the binding development plan.
With the binding development plan. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Pardon? Okay, let's take a five-minute break, and then I have a time certain, and then we're going to come back with item J6.
We're going to move into item J six. I had a time certain on this. And Commissioner Tabia, I think you're bringing this one, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for providing a time certain so the City of Melbourne could come up and discuss this. And with your permission, it seems as though there's been a development. May, again, with your indulgence, may the mayor come up and open very shortly on this?
Certainly. And that's Mr. Paul Afry. Mayor.
It's a nice title.
Thank you. Hello, Commissioner. Now, thank you for having me very much. We'll start out, and just give me a moment. Normally, as the new mayor of the City of Melbourne, I get a little more time, but I'm happy with this time. I appreciate it. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I greatly appreciate the ability to speak to you about this agenda item. Before I begin, I want to also thank the Commission for partnering with us on many projects, including the recent reconstruction of Babcock Street and the repaving of Stewart, and many stormwater quality projects that we've completed together to save the Indian River Lagoon. Real quick, infrastructure is important to me. One of my first jobs right out of high school was the Brevard County Road and Bridge. And I got to work there for three years before I went off into the service, and I got to see how important infrastructure is. As a matter of fact, they were building this building at the time, and I wondered why. Why are they putting this kind of building out in the middle of nowhere? And it was by itself. And if you look at Viera now and what has been done and the development, it's amazing. So, you know, it's all about pre-planning and infrastructure. So, as the City of Melbourne Mayor, I'm coming to you, I do have a council meeting tonight, and I would like to come back to my city council and kind of give a direction with the Commission, because I believe we need that partnership with the Commission, and we couldn't do it without you. So, that's where I stand. Thank you, Ms. Pritchett.
Thank you, sir, so much. Ms. Shannon Lewis?
Thank you, Madam Chair and County Commissioners. I appreciate the time today. Shannon Lewis, I'm the City Manager for the City of Melbourne, and I appreciate the few minutes to let you know that our city council did have an opportunity to speak about this project, the O'Gallie CRA, at a recent city council meeting. And what I'd like to do in the next few minutes is just give you an overview of what the city council's request is, and perhaps answer any questions you may have. And so, the city staff has been working with the county staff over the past year to create an interlocal agreement, and that began with the conversation about a public parking garage in the downtown O'Gallie CRA for approximately 250 to 300 public parking spaces. We did have a conversation on the record that those would be made free for the public, and so we don't have any issue with that. I know that that was something important to the county staff as well. Subsequent to that, and the reason why it's taken a little bit longer for us to finalize that interlocal, is we were approached by a private developer to construct a $30 million hotel in the downtown O'Gallie area, and also to construct the parking garage, so that it would be a public-private partnership between the hotel developer and the CRA, to construct additionally the 250 to 300 spaces that we would need for public parking, along with the required parking that the hotel would need to satisfy its requirements. And so, what we had originally anticipated is that to construct the public parking garage, we did estimate that that would be between $6 million and $7 million, and require an additional 13 years to complete the debt service payments, is that if we were to look at a hotel development in conjunction with the public parking garage for a site-specific incentive from that location only, would bring the total number of years needed with the O'Gallie CRA to 20. And I know that that sounds like a lot. And so, one of the ideas that we had, and again, as the mayor indicated, we need to go back to the city council this evening with the county commission's direction and what you'd like to see, is that I think there's some creative opportunities by which we can, one of the things that I can talk to the city council about is reducing the size, for example, of the boundaries of the total CRA after that 13th year, so that the CRA would really remain only in effect for the hotel development project. And any incentive that would be made for that particular development would strictly come from that parcel, and that would return the county TIF and the city TIF back to the corresponding jurisdictions after the 13th year, which is really what we believe we need to complete the debt service. Our city council has also indicated a willingness to be able to find alternatives to bring either the cost down, or to find ways through grants or other opportunities to reduce costs and thereby ending the CRA earlier. And we would certainly be willing to add that into any interlocal agreement. I see my time is almost up. The mayor and I are both here to answer any questions, and I thank you for your consideration and any input you have for our city council this evening.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Tabia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And in all honesty, I was a lot more comfortable with the mayor's explanation than this city manager, though I understand that both of you are independent and can't speak to the board. A little bit of background, I didn't want to have to go over this background, but every other CRA, including two that are made up of the exact same board as this one, have already entered into an interlocal agreement. With a county attorney's office, an interlocal draft, interlocal agreement was drafted and handed over. It includes such things as the only project of that CRA would be that parking garage, that a certain number, I believe 90% of those spaces must be free to the public, that there is low administrative costs, that if this truly is a priority, that the current projects be stopped, and those resources go to this parking structure. So, if the CRA is extended, it's extended to the shortest period of time. But we've acted in, the county has acted in good faith, and yet we have gotten very little in return. As you guys know, there has, and I don't want to get into this, and I certainly was not going to get into this had the mayor been the only individual that spoke, but there's an Auditor General's report, which there are some pretty substantive findings in there that make it troublesome if this interlocal agreement is not entered into per the specifications made. So, I'm going to, I think, and again, I certainly have never spoken on behalf of the board, but I would be more than willing to pull my resolution and give the City of Melbourne one more opportunity to come back with an interlocal agreement. And to be very clear, I certainly hope it's word for word, the one that was handed both to various elected officials, as well as the city manager, more than a month ago. I would certainly be more than willing to furnish your offices, but the provisions that I laid out were very clear. Again, that all current resources go to that garage, that the bulk of those spaces remain free, and that is the only project. So, again, I'm looking for board support here. Certainly, it means a lot. I imagine when the mayor goes back, that we're all on the same page as far as if this does continue, it's a single issue, and they don't continue with, I didn't want to get into the funding, but there's art projects, there's hundreds of thousands of dollars of lighting, there's facade grants that, believe it or not, a roof is considered a facade. And, I mean, this CRA is so old, it was created, and I'm not kidding, I pulled it up, I have it here somewhere, to alleviate chickens in the district. So, I mean, that should give you an idea of how old this CRA is.
So, you were in diapers?
I, and by the time this ends, I still will be in diapers.
Maybe you can, yeah.
My point is, thank you for doing this. I think we lit a fire underneath, and I'm sure Mayor Alfry's always been there, but this gives him additive incentive to go back to the board. So, if you guys are all in agreeance, I would pull my item and ask that, you know, we stick to those parameters and ask for that interlocal agreement to be returned to us in short order.
Okay, Commissioner Loeb, you're up. But just real quick, I think this is Commissioner Smith in Zonka's district, so you guys' opinion will probably weigh heavy on this as well. Commissioner Loeb?
First, I just want to thank the handsome and knowledgeable mayor of Melbourne, Mr. Alfry, for coming out, as well as Councilwoman Minus and the city manager, Ms. Lewis. I don't know what other folks' timeline is with respect to this, but I really would like to see something get back to us, having been negotiated with staff, having been vetted by staff, and ready for us to approve, with everyone acting in good faith in the next, let's say, six or seven weeks. I think it's enough with where things have been left off, that hopefully we can do that. So, to the extent that you guys can help us get something back timely, I would certainly appreciate it. As Commissioner Tabia mentioned, and I'll just say it a little more directly, I really, and I don't expect this, so please don't take it that way, but I just want to make sure everyone's on the same page, just to be, at the risk of being a little blunt. I don't really want to see any sort of gamesmanship with respect to the CRA obligating itself between now and the time that this comes back. I really don't expect it, but my blood's going to run a lot colder if that occurs. And what has been and remains a very collegial relationship would be negatively affected by that. The only other thing I'll point out before I hand it off is that, you know, we aren't, you guys aren't negotiating in a vacuum. What happens with respect to this has the potential and a decent likelihood of causing ripples or waves in other joint endeavors and ventures that we have. So, you know, certainly, I'm willing to be reasonable with you all. I think the rest of the board is as well. But this is kind of a straggler that we just want to get corralled and be done with it. So, my goal, hopefully, is the same as everyone else's goal in negotiating this, just, you know, to have something that's reasonable in place to put you guys in parity with the rest of the CRAs in the county.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As many of you have heard me say over and over and over again in my six years here on this board, I don't really have a problem with CRAs. I have a problem with the fact that they never go away. So, I would like to propose something, and I don't want to, maybe I do want to upset the apple cart, but my thought is, let's let this CRA end, bring it to a stop, and create a new CRA just for this project.
For a certain amount of years?
Excuse me?
For just a certain amount of years?
Yes. Because then, we can construct the CRA and put all the dots where we want, and cross the Ts that we want, and they'll have clear path to completing their project, and that project will have a definite end as well.
Commissioner Zonka?
I hadn't really thought of that, but it would have to be very narrow, again, focus on one project, kind of like the Cocoa Beach Garage, right? I'd like to hear from Mayor Alfry.
Okay, thank you. First couple things, Commissioner Tabia, thank you, sir, very much. You are correct regarding the J-LAC audit. I did call for that audit. Ms. Lewis was not the city manager. We did get our findings back, and I will, I will say, Ms. Lewis and the staff has done an amazing job to correct those. We are an open book, and so you are right on some of the findings. But I was the one, I did go to Tallahassee, and I did speak and request for that J-LAC audit, and I did get a unanimous audit request, and that is completed. So, all those findings will be corrected on my watch, and I assure you. Second, my only concern about making a new CRA is we still have four years that I honestly believe that we can take the funding and move it and shorten this. And I think my concern, and I'm only one of seven on a board, that if we wait to open up a new CRA or something, then these four years that we could be using to go toward this project would go wayside, because again, I'm only one person on the board. So, I'm open up to anything, but I do want to assure the Commission that you have my word. I will come back and let you know exactly where we are. And again, I can't do this without you, and I'm wanting a partnership for this infrastructure project. So, if any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I just, I appreciate your leadership, and just, obviously, go back to your board and tell them kind of where we are. I think you're right on the creation of a new CRA. I think that's a good point. But if you can make it work to where all parties are satisfied, kudos to you. But I guess we'll know more. How long do you want, Commissioner Tabia, a month? Is that too long?
Madam Chair, you know, I'm certainly comfortable with a month. I think probably the direction will probably come tonight. And hearing your response to that was absolutely perfect. I couldn't have said it better. Those four years, if this truly is a priority, we put money where priority is.
Right.
And as you know, CRAs, you're not only entrusted with money of the taxpayers of Melbourne, you're also entrusted with county tax dollars. And to put that in perspective, the TIF payment is roughly $188,000. So, over the course of the next four years, you're looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of $750,000 of just county TIF. Now, we are just under 40% of that, so more than double that, 1.5 million plus would be wasted on what I would consider wasted on facade grants, on art projects. And there was two or three other things listed here that made me very disappointed. If you could, as you say, prioritize that into the garage, I think that that probably would be the best use of the dollars, not only for us, but for the developer as well, because there's no certainty that, you know, this board in four years would make that same decision as soon as this one ends to move forward with that. So, that, I imagine, would put the developer in some limbo that he or she probably wouldn't be in favor of. But if you can continue with exactly your answer there, let's dedicate the next four years to cut off that tail of 13. I will be more than ecstatic to see the work product that you return to us.
And if I may say, sir, I assure you that with other parking garages in the county, you know, I want free parking, I expect free parking, not to mention, I will say, the CRA, again, I voted for, I voted in a way where, you know, facade grants, I feel that that should be the business. I'm a businessman, and I'm not in a CRA, and I fix up my own business and my own commercial property for the county that I pay taxes to. So, I understand where you're coming from, and I think we're all in agreeance, and I will come back to you, and I greatly appreciate all your time and your effort in this. And again, you have my word on that.
Madam Chair, yeah, and I do appreciate the good faith, because, and I know it's just not fortuitous timing, but we got the Cocoa Beach CRA. Remember, they built a parking garage with extension. Not that anyone goes through this, but it tells me when they deliver it in, you know, glossy, full color, that they've probably got more money than they know what to do with. But to give you an idea, the one in Cocoa Beach, according to their numbers, they have revenue per annum of $154,000 on the parking garage. So, I feel really bad for the taxpayers, not only of Cocoa Beach, but Brevard County, that paid into this parking structure, and then are paying to park there. And it gets worse. They're actually citing people for illegally parking there, so there's revenue on top of that as well. And Melbourne has made the pledge not to scrooge the county taxpayers the way that Cocoa Beach is so excited to do on a daily basis to the tune of $154,896 to be exact. So, thank you for that commitment.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So, Commissioner Smith, did you just push a button?
Yes.
Okay.
When you guys are speaking about this tonight, I know I can't speak for anybody here but myself, but I want to see that there are finite times set for getting these projects completed. Because as Commissioner Tabia mentioned, if we're talking four years or six years, four years or six years, these guys aren't going to be here. And I don't want to see the opportunity in five or six years for another extension. And you're not going to be probably in office then either. And whoever's sitting in your seat and the other seats in City Hall may just say, "Well, you know, let's, we got a CRA here, let's do this project, and let's just get an extension." So, I really don't want to see that, because we're not going to be here, and we're not going to be able to say, we're not going to be able to, we won't have the opportunity to put our foot down at that point in time.
Well, thank you, sir. And I would say that you probably agree with me, that we have an opportunity here, that we can hopefully get this project done and then end the CRA, and we all come out winners. And down the road, if they want to be responsible for opening up another CRA 30 years down the road, hopefully, with the correct infrastructure in place, you won't need that. And that's a perfect example where we are in Viera. Again, it's a beautiful place here, and I don't see a CRA coming here, we don't need it, and hopefully, we won't need it there. So, okay? Anything else?
Thank you for being here.
No, thank you for having me. I greatly appreciate it.
Just a thought, since everybody's brought all the information, I know you guys got to go home and brainstorm this with legal, but maybe it's possible to close the CRA out now and then start just a parking lot, one. So, I think from hearing Commissioner Smith, that might make him a little more comfortable. And then the parameters are all there, and we know that when we're doing this, it's just for a parking. So, instead of those four years going for other things, that would dissolve, and everything would start the parking garage.
If it's okay with you, I'll have our staff, work with your staff, and see what the best options are, and come back to you all, and, you know, we all can be on the same page here, whatever, again, the quickest and the fastest way to get it done.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I think there's still some debt on the books.
Oh, is there?
Yeah, that unfortunately would not be, and it's much less than other ones, but there's still some debt in the books. So, you know, it sounds good, but I don't know that that's a possible.
Okay, unless maybe they did some contractual thing, that that one closes other than paying debt. I don't know. You're going to have to get legal.
Okay. Well, we definitely have a direction for our council tonight, and I'll get back with you, and thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move to item J two.
Good morning, Commissioners. J two is a request from the Economic Development Commission of Florida Space Coast to approve a resolution. There is a representative from EDC here, Mr. Edgar Campa-Pella-Fox, if you'd like to.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Loeb, do you want to hear the card first, sir? You have your light on.
I can go before or after, whatever your preference is.
Okay, Mr. Edgar Campa, and you're going to have to say your last name. We just call you Edgar now, right?
Correct.
Yes, sir.
Good morning, Madam Chair. For the record, Edgar Campa-Pella-Fox, Business Development Director with the EDC. Thank you for having me. As Kathy mentioned, we are here to answer any questions regarding the application by Dark Storms Industries to be considered for the Admiral Room Tax Abatement Exception Program. And just want to mention also for the record, you probably saw that in the application, the company is considering moving a firearm facility to here, to Brevard County, specifically to Titusville, and in the Spaceport Commerce Park, and is expecting to bring 50 jobs to the Space Coast. The company is currently based in Ogden, Long Island, in New York, and has outgrown its facility. The company, as I mentioned, is a firearms manufacturer, and is, the building that they're considering to build here in the Space Coast is a 25,000 square feet building, with a plans for the future to expand that building to a 45,000 square feet building. So, initial footprint will be 25,000, with a future expansion for that same building to a 45. The company suspected, as I mentioned, to create 50 new jobs over four years, and the average wage for those jobs will be 50,000, with an approximate investment of 3.2 million between building and machinery and equipment in order to discharge their activities here. Another thing just to highlight, we are in an extremely competitive position, the Space Coast, with other communities in Florida, and specifically, the Panhandle was being considered as other locations for this. as other locations for this business development deal. One exciting thing to, or one of the very exciting things to highlight of this project is obviously the industry that they're actually operating. It will bring jobs outside aerospace to our community, helping diversify the economy, helping to provide jobs outside that industry, which, you know, we're very thankful for having this community, but we need a diversity of other jobs for citizens and residents. But also it will add a nice, it will be a nice addition to a cluster of firearms that is already happening here in the Space Coast. We have companies like Kel-Tec, Diamondback, Incoco, Norix Armament, Titusville, and it will add to that cluster and create really nice externalities between supplier development and talent attraction. I will yield the floor just if there's any questions from the commission. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Loeb?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just gonna take the mask off so I can speak a little easier here and well away from everyone else. I sent out a memo yesterday, I copied and pressed on it as well, just so that there was, you know, no thought that it was being hidden by anyone. Basically, there are three types of grants that have been lumped into this project or that have been contemplated.
Commissioner Loeb, I think what you sent in the memo on was gonna be on item J5?
Am I off?
I think so. It's the same, it's the same project, but this is the EDC part of the tax abatement. J5 is the one you sent the memo out on.
I may have flipped them then. You are right. I'm gonna be quiet for now.
It's okay. I just know you're gonna want to speak later as well.
I'm speechless for the moment.
Okay, I don't have any other, okay, Commissioner Tobias, I knew you were about to try here.
With your indulgence, a couple of questions for Edgar. Sorry, I'm pretty terrible with pronunciations, so I'll just call you Mr. Edgar. Thank you for the economic impact analysis. In it, you said there were, you put down 50 direct jobs, is that correct?
Correct. And that's, Madam Chair, that's according to the application received by the EDC.
That was my follow-up. Where did you receive that estimate?
Madam Chair, we received those numbers from the applications submitted by the company for this program.
That's all I wanted. Thank you, Edgar, I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Commissioners, I don't have any other lights. Can I entertain a motion?
I can make a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Loeb. Commissioner Zanka, did you want to comment, ma'am?
Yeah, I'm gonna support this because there's always the clawback feature. I mean, so if they don't do the jobs, then we can pull that exemption, so that's all.
Okay, call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Passes 4-1 with Commissioner Tobias in objection. We're gonna move to item J3.
This is an item for legislative intent to amend the Brevard County Code, Chapter 98, Article 4, Port St. John Dependence Special District. What you have in Port St. John is an extra advisory board. You have the Port St. John Dependence Special District, and in some cases right now, that, those items for rezoning and comp plan amendments go to Port St. John, and then they go to the board. Some of them go to the Port St. John Board, then the Planning and Zoning Board, and then the Board of County Commissioners. This amendment, as proposed, would allow the Port St. John items for zoning and comp plan to go to the Port St. John Board, Planning and Zoning, and the Board of County Commissioners on all items. The difference would also be that if there is not a quorum for the Port St. John Dependence Special District, or they cannot come up with a recommendation, the item could proceed forward to the Planning and Zoning Board for a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners.
Commissioners, this is my request, just so that I would make the process move along quicker for people that were trying to build projects. May I have a motion? Motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Loeb. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Passes 5-0. We're into item J4. Commissioner Tobias, I think this is yours, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I think since 1998, we've heard closing time, one last call for alcohol, so finish your whiskey or beer, closing time, you don't have to go home, you just can't stay here. Section 6.3 of County Code limits alcohol sales between the hours of 2:00 a.m. and 7:00 a.m., except on New Years, of which it's 4:00 a.m. and 7:00 a.m. This would deregulate alcohol sales and allow them within those hours of 2:00 a.m. to 7:00 a.m. This does not have any impact on municipalities. And after speaking with the sheriff, it sounds as though he is not in opposition. I'll say that again, since that had such a big impact on the previous one, that the sheriff is not in opposition to this. So please make your decisions accordingly. Deregulating the hours of sale of alcohol increases freedom for residents and visitors in unincorporated Brevard County. And I just want you to think about this, there are, you are three times more likely to die in the United States from obesity, and yet McDonald's and Taco Bell is open 24 hours. So let's allow that same freedom to places that sell alcohol. So after discussion, I'd like to make a motion for legislative intent and permission to advertise the ordinance as listed in the agenda report. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir. I'm gonna support this, sir, because I talked to the sheriff, and he said it was good.
I didn't want to get upset.
I was just gonna have a little fun with you here, but yeah, I definitely talked to the sheriff, and he said it was all go, so I'm comfortable with it. Mr. Loeb?
Just briefly, I'd ask for one change before supporting it. At the beginning of the text on the bottom of the first agenda sheet, just start it with unless otherwise prohibited, comma. I don't want someone to have some sort of an argument that this overrides private businesses' ability to negotiate leases that would have different requirements or more onerous requirements. So just adding the words unless otherwise prohibited, comma, I'll support it.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to reiterate what I said last time, that it makes a lot of sense from the standpoint that if bars are open longer, that people will leave when they want to leave, so that they're not all leaving at the same time. And so you'll spread out the people that may have drunk too, drank too, what's that right word? Drank too much, that they will, they won't all be leaving at the same time, and won't all be on the road at the same time. So I think this is a great, great ordinance. And I'll second it.
Commissioner Tobias, you did make a motion, right, sir?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Is it with Commissioner Loeb's?
May I ask our county attorney?
Please.
That's not a problem, the change?
It doesn't impact the intent?
We can insert that, no problem.
Okay, then, absolutely.
Your seconds to hold.
Okay.
Good? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Passes 5-0. All right, we're gonna move to item J5. Commissioner Loeb, this is your one, sir.
Okay, so with respect to the memo that I sent out yesterday, outlined a couple different options. I do know that staff, at least within Brevard County, prefers to go the second of the two options. They think it's a cleaner, easier approach. And in fact, the second option, little b, be like Bravo, was the one that was brought up by the company in response to little a that was proposed. So what I had proposed to them was that we approve it contingent on the county being given priority as a lien holder, not first or second priority, because they have their SBA loan, they're gonna get a bank loan, and then they're gonna have a charter development corps that's gonna provide them additional funding. That would be the first and second priority lien holder, respectively. So we would, we would be third priority as lien holder over the subject property for an amount equal to value for the, to the amount listed for the land acquisition grant of $362,600. Our lien, as I said, would be subordinate to the bank loan as first, and the CDC loan in second priority. At the beginning of year six, if the company has been and is still then in compliance with their agreement or agreements with the county and with N-Beds, we'd then go ahead and record a satisfaction of liens to go ahead and extinguish that lien. The other option, which was actually suggested by the company, and I'm fine with this, and I think the county attorney's office at least prefers this to the first, but I'd like to give the applicant the option of choosing either, once they have a chance to go over it with legal counsel. They had suggested instead that the land acquisition grant simply not be dispersed until the beginning of year six, at which time it would be provided to the company. If they have been and remain in compliance with their agreements with the county and with N-Beds, I'm fine with either, but I'd like to move to approve it with the grantee choosing either of those two options.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Post?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good morning, Commissioners. So this is a project that is another agenda item related to the prospect that we've called Project Freedom. It's known as Dark Storm Industries, a group out of New York State. At a recent meeting of the Board of Directors for the Economic Development Zone, which is the group that I report to, as you know, they approved a package and also a recommendation to come before the commission. So today, you have two actions before you that are being requested. The first is to approve entering into a real estate contract with the company to sell approximately 10 acres of property up in the Spaceport Commerce Park in Titusville. This would be at $37,000 an acre, which would be one of the higher price points we've had on the sales in that park. The lot itself is kind of a rectangular shaped lot, has some site issues. The company will have to mitigate for some wetlands to make it a usable site. The second part of what we're asking for is to grant concurrence to an economic incentive package that was approved by the Zone's Board of Directors. Per an ordinance that was passed the same year the zone was created, any kind of outlay and an incentive that goes above the half a million mark has to come before the County Commission for concurrence. In that economic incentive package, we have three separate grants. The first one is what we call a site preparation reimbursement grant, which would reimburse them for eligible site development costs to prepare the pad. As I mentioned, there's some wetlands they have to mitigate for, but they'd have to go in, clear, grade the site, build the building pad, do any kind of storm water retention issues, do all of that kind of thing. And those would be the kinds of eligible expenses we'd be looking at, up to $250,000. Again, it's worth noting that we do what we call performance grants. We don't provide any money upfront. The company has to have the wherewithal to acquire the property from us, to build the building, to get in it, make sure it meets all the building code standards for the local jurisdiction, which in this case is the city of Titusville. And then they would have to occupy it for a period of time before they would get the first dollar from us. The second grant is what we call a capital investment grant, reimbursement grant, and it looks at the overall capital injection that they anticipate to put into the property over the course of the first couple of years of the project. We anticipate initially a building cost of approximately 1.6 million. We think they will also have equipment that they will place in service there that will be approximately 1.2 million. They think some additional outlays on equipment may be made in the second year. And of course, they're also counting the land value, which gets it up to approximately 3.2 million overall. The third grant is what we call a site acquisition reimbursement grant. And this one is to help them zero out the cost of the land acquisition over a period of several years. As Edgar mentioned from the EDC, this has been a highly competitive project where we've been in competition from what we believe to be from several different communities across the southeast United States. And having spent time in Alabama and Georgia doing economic development, I know that they have some abilities to do some things that we can't do in Florida. We cannot just provide the land to them. When we do the land sale in the Commerce Park, that money has to go into a special restricted account that can only be used for improvements in the park. So the only way that we could try to be competitive, and I'll say competitive because the other issue we're dealing with is, in recent years, the state has not had the tools that we've had to use in the past. We no longer have the QTI program, which is a tax credit program, the qualified targeted industry program, and we no longer have the closing fund program through the state. So it's put a little bit more pressure on us at the local jurisdiction to really come up with an incentive package that really is going to be attractive to the company. Hence the reason for the zone grants that I'm talking about, and also the tax abatement on the property. Each one of these grants that I mentioned has a couple of different qualifying requirements before they would get it, but all have to reach a certain benchmark before they would get the reimbursement. On the site acquisition reimbursement grant, they would actually have to stay in the property, and we would provide that grant to them in installments under a four-year plan. That's the current agreement that's been proposed. As far as the site preparation grant and that capital investment grant, the key qualifying criteria for that would be they'd have to build the building, complete it, and then occupy it for a period of at least six months. In addition to that, the agreement does spell out some other things they would have to do. They would have to provide documentation to us so that we would actually see what the cost of the building is and things of that sort. The application that they submitted to us did call for the creation of 50 jobs, and that's what we fully expect. But when we do these agreements, we look at what we think the minimum attainable job creation should be before we could make a legal claim to recapture some of this money. So this is the clawbacks that you often heard us talk about. And thanks to the county attorney's office, we've been very appreciative for their support. They've helped craft the language for what I think are very strong clawbacks. In this particular case, we're trying to get the company up to 25 full-time jobs by, I think, the year 2026, in order to avoid the clawback of the grants that would be approved and given to them. So I know it's a lot of information, but we'll try to answer your questions as best we can.
Commissioner Smith has had a new light, sir?
No.
Commissioner Loeb?
I think that's the old light, madam.
Okay. Commissioners, do we have any questions?
No, I'd like to make the motion to approve.
Do you have a motion to approve? Commissioner Tobias, I'm sorry, your thing's not on, but I can tell you're wanting attention, so.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And with your indulgence, again, a few questions for Mr. Post. And we did discuss some of these prior to head prior. They certainly don't want to put anyone on the hot spot, certainly not staff. But the EDC has informed us that Dark Storm Incorporated indicated that they would have 50 direct jobs. Is that, is that fair, Mr. Post?
That is a job goal that the company has put. They also put it in our application, too. This is, of course...
Okay, so, perfect, that's all, absolutely. Can you explain section 3.2.2 of this agreement? They'll be eligible for reimbursement of the purchase price of the property in the amount of whatever, $360,000, and yet only create 30% of those jobs, or 15? Is that correct?
So for the site acquisition grant, we do have a chart, they're actually, well, excuse me, a table, there are two tables inside the economic incentive agreement for that third grant, the one you're referencing for the reimbursement of the site acquisition cost. By the time they get to the end of 2023, they would have to have at least five jobs there to be able to get the first of the reimbursement installments, which is $90,650. By the end of year 2024, they'd have to have a minimum, a minimum of 10 full-time jobs there to get the next installment of the $90,650. If they didn't have 10, if they had eight, they would not receive the installment for that particular year.
Okay, so I guess I over-exaggerated the 15 there. And for the remaining $500,000, I guess they would need 25 jobs. Is that, is that fair?
Well, this is a process that is ramping up. So what we have in the table, that again, we've worked with the company, along with our county attorney staff, to kind of craft something that would then get the approval of the Zone Board.
Mr. Post, I just need a yes or a no.
Well, unfortunately, it's a harder question to answer, because you have a ramping up to get to that 25 full-time jobs. We expect that by the year 2026. We recognize that it may take them a while to get their operation underway, to get the sufficient staff. But these are minimum job totals, so we hope that they exceed those.
But again, they offered 50, contracts 25. What is the average wage of these jobs promised?
We do anticipate it being 50,000, and I think that's in our agreement.
Great.
Yes, sir.
Is one of these jobs likely to be the business owner, or one of the two business owners?
It could, yes, sir.
Okay. I looked at Chief Executive Magazine of a survey done in 2018, 2019 of similar revenue sized companies. They said the average CEO made $417,560. Now, adjusting for CPI, that puts it in today's dollars at 470,000. So the following, this is the following question. If that individual makes $470,000, and they create 14 other jobs at a $10 minimum wage, that's, it's gonna be $10, that would have a average minimum wage of $50,000. So in other words, they would have created 14 minimum wage jobs and yet have an average of $50,000. Would they still be eligible then for many of these incentives after creating 14 minimum wage jobs?
Well, we will be tracking salary and wage information, that's for sure. I do not... I do not know what the CEO will be paid, but we will be tracking it just to see what the annualized wage is.
Help me here, I, yeah, I think you do a darn good job at tracking. That's not, that wasn't my question. When you don't answer a question, it's probably you don't like the question. So the question, and I'll repeat again, if the CEO makes $470,000 and he creates, or she, I don't know, 14 jobs at minimum wage, they get over that $50,000 threshold of $750, which is 50,000 times 15, if he or she is paid the average according to Chief Executive Magazine, would they then be entitled to receive the incentives for creating 14 minimum wage jobs and the 15th being the CEO who makes just the average salary according to Chief Executive Magazine 2018, 2019?
Well, I do appreciate the question, and I do understand it. And I'd have to probably confer, I guess, with the county attorney's office to see the calculation, but it is conceivable that that would probably do the trick. Of course, we do hope that, because it's a very competitive market, that paying minimum wage would not attract the workers.
I hope to win the lottery each and every week, yet it just doesn't happen. Madam Chair, may I continue? Guys, this, you know, you put lipstick on a pig here, and I could go over the many, I have a whole line of questions on good faith, but clearly, there's not any good faith here. The company's promised 50 jobs, yet we have markers far less than 50 jobs. This incentive package, understand, is almost a million dollars. And yet, we could have as few as 15 jobs, and we've just been informed it could be as little as 10. Yeah, guns are cool, but do we really want to hand over this money? And think about the other areas that, or the other municipalities, the other government entities that are handing, heck, we just authorized the EDC to look at tax abatement. Now, Commissioner Zanka has talked about handouts. This is nothing more than a handout. They pay for the land, and then we reimburse them. I would love to buy a Ferrari. I can afford a Ferrari right now if I know Brevard County is going to pay me back in four annual installments for said Ferrari. It's not, it's, it's, this is nothing more than a government handout. And, and, you know, I could go into the good faith, but there's really not a point. I think it, we would, I think this puts us in a really tough position. Again, they promised 50 jobs. Our agreement is a small fraction of that. So I can't, Mr. Post, I appreciate that you presented it extremely well, but if you would like to contradict anything that I just said, by all means, please feel free to do that. But I just took it exactly out of the contract that was put forth. And had this all had 50 jobs, I don't know that I would still support it. But again, since it's as few as 15 and as much as a million, I just, I just don't think it's probably the best direction for county taxpayers.
Thank you. Commissioner, I'm sorry, so it's Commissioner Post, I'm trying to do better than Ministers. These are $50,000 a year jobs?
That would be the, the average annual wage that we would track over the jobs created for the period, so...
Well, that's $24 an hour. So it's, it's, it's not bad. What I like about this is one, they're going to relocate from New York. And I know we're still competing because the Panhandle is actually very aggressive with this, but I, from talking to you, and I sit in those board meetings, Alabama, Georgia, Carolinas have also been trying to make plays for this, with this company as well. And I got to tell you something I love, is it just came out that Brevard County is number two in the nation as far as economic growth. And Commissioners, I think it's because of a lot of the things that we've done over the time period of maybe help stimulate in some of the economy with incentives. Now, I like that this does have clawbacks in it, but I think we've made some pretty good decisions. And I think the state of Florida is actually doing very good compared to the rest of states. Brevard County, we're rocking it out. And so, what I like about this as well, I mean, we've been trying to get diversity, but I mean, face it, District 1 and 2 is still very heavily on the, on the space. So this is branching out into the, more into the guns. And we do have a lot of guns in District 1, I guess, good Republican district, but we have Knights Armament, they are doing a marvelous job. And here's another company coming along with a little bit of competition with them. So I think this is a great opportunity. I feel pretty comfortable with the economic incentives that we're offering. I think they're, they're fair. I really do believe this company's going to do better than we have written down here with some parameters. I think this is a good solid company coming in. And if, if the CEOs are making $470 on their company, they're going to buy a really nice house in District 1. So that's, that's another good thing, too, and spend money at the restaurants. Commissioner Smith, you're up, and then Commissioner Lober, you're next, and then Commissioner Zanka.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Oops.
I, I get Commissioner Tobias's point about jobs and Ferraris, but that's like comparing apples and oranges. You're, you're not, you're not going to get somebody to just pay you Ferrari, for your Ferrari, and let you just drive around without having to pay something. This company here is going to pay all these loans and all these expenses. They're not going to pay it on the backs of $10 an hour employees. They're not going to, they're not going to have that kind of income. So it's obvious that they're going to have the income to pay these bills because they're already doing it, and they wouldn't be coming here and obligating themselves if they didn't. And again, with the clawbacks, they're not going to get to the point where we're handing over any money until they've already performed. So I'm in favor of this, and I will make a motion to approve.
That's okay. And I, I think I've made my position pretty clear over the last several years of being on the commission on how I feel about cash incentives, because we're essentially financing their, their business risk. Because regardless of whether or not they borrow this money from the bank, or they borrow it from, you know, their buddy or whoever, any investor, we're essentially paying them back for their investment, and I can't, I am never going to be okay with that. Tax abatement's a different bargain, because that's what voters voted for. And I believe that, you know, that is our oper, that is our open arms saying, welcome to our county, we're going to try to help you out starting out. But to pay somebody back for land that they're purchasing to build their business on and to pay them back for their equipment is, I want this deal. I mean, I want to, anybody interested in opening a business? You know, because really, I'm sure if these, this criteria went out to bid, hey, come build your business here and we'll give you back almost a million dollars after a few years of 50 or less jobs. It's a pretty sweet deal. So I'm not going to support this.
Commissioner Lober?
If I can just have a little bit of leeway, Madam Chair, I want to kind of go back and forth on this a couple of times because I think we can get this to work. Commissioner Smith, would you just humor me and withdraw your prior motion? I'm going to propose another one. I'll just tell you, doing the math, if you keep it the way that it is, you're not going to have to vote.
Sure, I'll, I'll be happy to hear what you have to say.
Okay. Well, what I would propose, if you withdraw your motion, and if you don't, I'm not going to support it, two things. The first, that we introduced this item with, as far as giving the applicant a choice, which it didn't sound like they were opposed to, between either having us serve as third priority lien holder for an amount equal to the value of the land acquisition grant, so $362,600. I already discussed lien priority and the conditions for that. Give them, give them that choice, or we can simply wait till the beginning of year six to disperse the funds, then we don't have to mess with liens at all, whichever their preference is. I would still insist that they choose one or the other of those, noting that I think their initial preference was for the second, and also that our staff's preference was for the second. The other thing, based on what Commissioner Tobias had mentioned, I think there's a way to address that without killing the, the whole package here. We say that the CEO, the president, or the equivalent administrator, if they give the person another title, that their salary not be factored into wage calculations for purposes of determining compliance. But I do think we should allow it to be factored into the number of jobs created and counting as one of the required jobs created. I do want to say, though, I agree when it comes to the capital investment reimbursement and some of the other grant portions, the clawbacks definitely appear to be reasonable. But when it comes to either the land acquisition grant, all they have to do is buy the land, and they're entitled to it without having employed anyone, or the site prep, all they have to do is prep the site, get the, you know, get that done, and they're, they're entitled to it. I think having these two conditions, one, having them choose either A or B from what we discussed earlier with the conditions that were laid out, as far as either going the lien route with third priority or alternatively just waiting till, till year six. And then secondarily, we just say whoever their, their chief operating officer or CEO is, whatever the equivalent is for their top dog in the, in the organization, we just don't factor that into the wages. So if they're obligated, let's say, just for easy math, to create 10 jobs at an average wage of $50,000 a job, we say, okay, the CEO or whatever that person's title is counts as one of the jobs, so now they only have to get nine more jobs, and those nine jobs will be factored in on the salary of whatever those nine employees are paid, or wages. So I think it at least in part addresses Commissioner Tobias's concerns, it addresses my concerns. And that, if you would withdraw your motion, that'll be my immediate motion following.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Okay, that's my motion.
Motion and a second. I do have one comment card, so I'm going to call it here real quick. Ms. Sandra Sullivan. And as she's coming up, Commissioner Lober, I thank you for sending out this memo, gave me time to read through it and figure it out. So I appreciate that very much, sir.
Certainly.
Yes, ma'am.
Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. Aside from the subsidy part, when we're a county, we're in very high growth, I don't understand why you even need to do that. But my, my biggest concern is hearing the comments about the wetlands. And we, I've been, I attended the meeting on sustainability to do with sea level rise and a higher incidence of Cat 4 and Cat 5 hurricanes. And I would encourage the county to look into wetland scientific literature that talks about this as a way to mitigate sea level rise and the impact from the rain events from a higher statistical number of hurricanes. So just as you saw in Merritt Island, where properties are, that never flooded, that got developed, where wetlands are being filled in, now residents there have a lot more flooding issues. I come from South Florida, and as you know, in South Florida, they built out way past, you know, they thought, we'll never build past Sawgrass Mills Mall, and they ended up building 40 miles more. Now, in East Fort Lauderdale, we, our second home, when it rains, our Florida room and our garage floods, just was when it rains, heavy rain. And the issue here is, you saw after Irma, the wetlands are all under, on the, on the St. John's floodplains, we're under three and four feet of water. Those flood, those wetlands are your water quality, and they are your insurance policy for your, for your entire county, for a place for that water to go. Now, South Florida made mistakes on their development, but you have an opportunity, this is property that the county owns, and you're going to fill in wetlands, and the more you fill in wetlands, the more flooding issues you have in the future. I would urge you to look into the research on flood, on wetlands and how important they are to the water quality, i.e. the lagoon, and also as your insurance policy for your whole county, that you don't run into the problems that South Florida is running into. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes 3-2 with Commissioner Zanka and Tobias in objection. Okay, we are moving into item... Oh, are we done? Thank you, J.7. Commissioner Lober?
All right. Um, wait, I think that would be me. Commissioner Tobias, I think, requesting to go.
Oh, I'm sorry, throw me off with Merritt Island. Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is an exact reflection of the Port St. John Advisory Board, so exactly what Eden said, or Ms. Bentley said, this would be the same one, I'll go over it real quickly. We just approved the one for the PSJ dependent special. I thought it was a step in the right direction. However, I believe these boards probably need to be dissolved, and it's not just me. There was a sunset provision on this, so when the people created this, they also believed it. Anyway, those issues set aside, looking at the county ordinance, it's clear that Port St. John and North Merritt Island dependent special districts were created in parallel. So this proposed amendment would keep these boards having the same authority and close the loophole of holding a develop, development by not having a quorum. So again, it is the exact same of what this board just voted 5-0 for the Port St. John special dependent district.
Okay, Commissioner Lober, this is your board, sir.
Yes, ma'am, a couple of things. First off here, if I can take this off here. I supported the, the earlier item because frankly, Chair, it's in your district and you were supportive of it. If you would have gone the other way, I would have gone the other way on that. This is in my district, it's totally different. I can tell you, my inclination to dissolve the North Merritt Island special district is non-existent. Regardless of how this goes, as far as this particular item, I'm not willing to do that. I don't, I don't see a reason to do that. I see a lot of reasons to keep it. It's, it's a great way for me to get the input of the folks that are most directly affected by the decisions that we make up here. Now that said, I do not, I do not think that this item, as it's drafted, would do anything to further that. I don't have a problem tentatively supporting this item with the understanding I'm supporting it solely for the purpose of it going out for advertisement. I would not today adopt it, but I do, I do not have an issue with it being advertised. So I'm fine supporting this today with the understanding I'm not going to be doing anything to dissolve North Merritt Island special district. I don't support that now, I don't intend to support that in the future. But I do agree, there is an interesting item that was brought up. If we have a continual issue where for six months, someone, or we have a project where there's no quorum, it's not fair to keep folks held hostage indefinitely for that. So in that sense, it's an interesting idea. I do want to get input from the folks that do live in North Merritt Island as to whether they want to see this go, but I'll, I'll support it for today's purposes, for advertising only.
Okay. So do I have a motion?
Yes, ma'am. Chair, motion for legislative intent permission to override this ordinance as attached in the agenda.
Okay. I have a motion and a second by Commissioner Lober, Commissioner Zanka.
Yeah, I would just ask that if you, when you bring the item, I would like to see, I mean, I could ask for the same information, but since it's your item, I'd like to see the attendance, the number of meetings that were canceled, like, all that information if possible, and, and the listed board members, because I believe that there's many that are on both boards.
Madam Chair, and, and yes, I'll get that information, but a cursory look showed that North Merritt Island does a much better job showing up than the Port St. John. So the, the issue is much larger at the Port St. John, hence, that's the reason why we had Ms. Ruzanka here instead of a regular zoning meeting in which I could dress like a character.
Maybe supply both.
Yes. So absolutely, I'll bring that information.
Okay, I have a motion on the table and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0. I have two public comment cards, Mr., I'm thinking it's Art Hitch, and then Ralph Livingston.
Thank you for the opportunity to say something. My name is Art Hitch, I live at 141 Hester Drive, Cocoa Beach, Florida, and I live across what once was probably one of the most beautiful pieces of property that Brevard County had, Laurie Wilson Park. Now Laurie Wilson Park is a disgrace, it's an embarrassment. I wonder when the last time any one of you have visually looked at Laurie Wilson Park? Since 2004, when we had four unwanted visitors by the name of Charlie, Francis, Jean, and Ivan, the maintenance to that park has been bare bones. The, if any of you would go specifically on a weekend to see what is going on in that park right now, there are literally 100 or more cars parked illegally on the grass everywhere. The boardwalk, what's really brought me here today was, my wife's probably, well, she was up there this morning walking, but to get to the access from the south end of the park, it is closed now. It is blocked off. You cannot go to the south end of the park and get to the beach. You have to walk through the hammock, and that boardwalk is in bad shape. I have contacted Parks and Rec, Economic Development, and Commissioner Lober's office, and I've gotten very few responses. The only response that I've gotten so far on this park has been from the supervisor, I believe his name is Terry Lane, who explained to me that there is supposedly a plan, that they just did three entrances on the north side of Laurie Wilson Park, and they're beautiful, but they left the south side alone. And it just does not make sense. Also, he explained to me that, yes, Economic Development has some type of plan. I attended the, the meeting, I think, five years ago, when they prevented this big grandiose plan, which a lot of it I liked, some of it I didn't. But they said now, to do the entrance and the walkways to the south side of the park, they cannot be done. to the south side of the park, they cannot be done until November at the earliest because of the turtle season right now. I just think it is a disgrace, especially with, you've got a couple of major events coming up. You have an air show that's gonna be used, Laurie Wilson Park, and a surfing event, and the access points are just unbelievable. Please go look at that park. Get something done. You know, it's been since 2004, and it just keeps going steadily downhill. My wife and I bought our house in Cocoa Beach, not mainly, but one of the reasons was because of Laurie Wilson Park. I mean, I thank you for letting me talk today, but please, please, do something. It's a beautiful, beautiful, thirty-two-acre-plus piece of property that's a disgrace.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, just a couple of thoughts with respect to that. First, I do wanna say, our funding doesn't control law enforcement response to cars parked illegally. We could put ten million dollars into the park today, and if people still wanna park illegally, there's nothing we can do about that. If there are folks that are illegally parked in a city, I would suggest calling the city's police department. If it's in the county, I would suggest calling BCSO. As to part of the, or some of the walkway to the beach, the beach access being closed, that's probably because we're in the process of repairing or replacing at least one of the walkways. I think it was maybe six months ago, I'm just going off the top of my head here, that we allocated seven digits specifically to replace the walkways in that park and to better it. So it may well be that the reason that there isn't an accessibility at present is because they're doing work specifically to improve it. In fact, when that came up, I tried to ensure that we had adequate funding go to the park, to ensure not only that we did the bare bones minimum, but that we put in a synthetic instead of a natural wood product, so that it would last quite a bit longer, and also, in all likelihood, be a little bit safer. You're not as likely to get a splinter from a piece of plastic as you are from wood, as it deteriorates. So yes, it may have been since 2004 that there have been other substantial investments into it, but I know we had two times in short succession that we allocated seven digits to that park in the past year or so. I think another one, as I recall, there are a ton of parks in D-2, but I believe with that park, we also allocated some money to replace one of the pavilions, I think on the east side, but I may be misrecollecting that. But I can tell you, there is money that's been allocated to it recently, millions of dollars, and frankly, it's something that, it just takes a while to get through the government process of finding a contractor to do the work. It's bigger than we can do in-house, as I understand it. I don't know if Jim maybe has a better idea in terms of the status of those repairs. I apologize for putting you on the spot, but I know it's something that we've already approved.
Commissioner, I think you did a pretty good job. The north crosswalks were replaced with a composite. They were completed. When I spoke to, you know, tourism is the one funding the park, and I spoke to the tourism director last week, and we talked, they are working on a south crosswalk. They're trying to replace the boards to get that open up. What you have with the crossovers, excuse me, what you have with the crossovers is you have turtle season. So after February 28th, you have to be very careful what construction you do. I also know there's some work going on in the dog park, so I don't have all the details in front of me.
I appreciate that.
But we can get you some kind of update.
Yeah, I just, if I'm saying, because I'm going by memory here, if I've said something that's inaccurate, I would very much appreciate if you'd correct me or my misrecollection, if there has been any.
No, not that I recall. And I believe the number was 1.375 million or something in that neighborhood.
Yeah, we had another one come up. We had them in short succession, back to back, where we had two separate projects, as I recall, with Laurie Wilson. It wasn't the same meeting, but we had one that was a solid allocation in that lineup, and another that was a seven-digit allocation. I think we put in over, I think it was over two million in just a handful of months.
Sounds about right, yes.
All right. I appreciate it, Jim. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ralph Livingston? Livingston, I'm sorry.
Hello, sir. How are you today?
Good morning.
You stayed with us to the end.
I'm nervous. My name is Ralph Livingston. I live at 800 North Fifth Boulevard, apartment 403. I wasn't expecting to come up here and speak today. Again, I was gonna say, the Lord works in mysterious ways, just as He did the last time I was up here nearly a year ago. I'm here to speak about the administrative order that's in place that decides the volunteer coaches. I'm not saying that the administrative order is wrong. It's great. The people that I've spoken with, we all agree that it's a perfect tool. We're just, in my own words, asking that it be tweaked somewhat. I was just on the phone yesterday with Alex Goins and Mr. Anthony Blunt and Michael Blake, and they're all, what we're trying to do is get on the agenda. I came here today to try to find out how to get on the agenda, and I was told that I had to ask in person to do so. And I wasn't expecting this. So that's what I'm here to do. You know, I came here last year, nearly a year ago, and really, you know, spoke about the type of person I am. I'm still that type of person. Currently, I'm, we're still raising five grandchildren, ages seven to twelve. They're all at Vieira Charter Academy right now. The oldest one, I just assisted with the basketball team for our oldest grandson, and now I'm assisting with the track team for our oldest grandson. There's two coaches for that team, the track team, Mr. Curtis and myself, and there's forty-five kids. You know, all I'm saying is volunteering is a task, and it's a lot of people that needs, a lot of children that needs volunteers. I'm not, you know, I don't know what the words to use. Mr. Blunt is better with the wording than I am, and it doesn't help that I'm nervous at this time. But that's my main goal today, was to come here to find out, how can we get on the agenda? And the people that I named earlier, along with several others, want to be able to come and just talk about, how can we adjust the administrative order, not make any changes, because we don't want people who are abusive to children, who are drug dealers, or, you know, a problem to society, who hasn't worked to better themselves to be around our kids, but to somehow help those who have changed their lives to help our children. So I'm asking, can we get on the agenda in some way sometime next month for the evening hour, which fits a lot of those people's timeframe? I hope I'm doing this the right way. Excuse me.
You did great, sir. I didn't even hardly know you were nervous at all.
I am.
Commissioner Lober?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I just wanna kinda give a recap for some folks that may be a little fuzzy. This is the gentleman that wanted to coach one of the teams. Jim and Mary Ellen and I spoke about it at some length, and I made a pitch to try to amend that AO. It was probably about a year ago, as he stated. He had some really fine individuals essentially vouch for him, for want of a better term, say that he's turned his life around. He's a good guy, productive citizen. I don't doubt that. I was happy to look at tweaking the AO then. The only reason I haven't brought it back is because I think it was essentially 4-1, I was shot down. If I have reason to believe, if you all are willing to hear it again, I'll add it on as a D-2 item, but I just didn't wanna bring back the same thing without the situation having changed, or some new information having come to light. I would still support making the changes I proposed a year ago, but if you all are in the same spot, I'm not gonna add it if there's no reason. But if you all wanna hear it again, I'm happy to add it. I still think it's a good idea.
I'm probably still in the same place, Commissioner Lober. Not that I don't really like Mr. Livingston, but I think there's a lot of unforeseen consequences, because you can't do for one and not for all of them. And I think that would greatly raise the liability with the county as well. If you can come up with a creative way, that it wouldn't do either of those two things, I'd be willing to hear it. But I've been racking my brain back there. But I have other people that would love to do this, the same type of thing, and it just pokes in my mind every time I try to think through it. So I don't know that I could do that yet, unless you can come up with some way to carve out. I even tried to go back a certain amount of time, but nobody qualified, so.
There's another way, and I don't know if this is maybe a little further a stretch than what you're thinking, but the other way that's perhaps a bit extreme, but it's doable, and it's worth at least perhaps considering. Instead of us doing the vetting, we say to these organizations that put on events at county facilities, you do the vetting, so we have no hand in that whatsoever. And if we think that there's something that needs to be disclosed to participants, we can mandate that, you know, once they've done the vetting, if they find certain things that check a box that we say in advance need to be disclosed, we can do that. But if we're doing the vetting, we're gonna be responsible for everything that falls through.
Yeah, I think if they have a felony right now, that's where I'm struggling, and I know there are different ones. But I mean, when we have that in there right now, what it's protecting District 1 with right now is the greater good. So if there's some way to go back in a period of time, but again, I even tried that with a few, and I couldn't even get a time period clear. So as of right now, I'm probably not in that place unless you send out a memo with some great idea, and we can figure that out. But just for the unforeseen consequences and the liability.
Yes, ma'am.
And I believe you're a wonderful person. But this is what I'm struggling with, and I've really tried, so. Commissioner Zanka?
Yeah, I'd like to talk to staff on what our legal parameters are, but I'm definitely open to the idea of, because I think everybody's redeemable. Now, where I usually have issue with is crimes involving children, because I don't know, I mean, there are certain crimes that I don't know that anybody could be not forgiven for. Everybody deserves forgiveness, but I don't know that that's something. I've read too many science and psychology articles to make me comfortable with crimes involving children. But I'm definitely at least open to the idea of looking at it, for sure. So I'll talk to staff, myself, and see if...
And Madam Chair, if Commissioner Zanka sees something where there's some willingness, if she wants to add it as a, you know, as her item, I'm still where I'm at. I'm happy to support anything that's reasonable, that would, you know, put folks that really have rehabilitated themselves in a position where they can contribute to the community. So I, you know, again, and I understand where you all are coming from, but if there is, let's say there's some crime involving, oh, I don't know that it would be a felony, but let's pretend it is, just for sake of argument here. You know, we have someone that has a building, and they're required to leave the door unlocked during certain hours, and they didn't do that, and there's a fire, and God forbid someone gets killed as a result, and they get charged with something, and it's a felony, whatever that might be, and they get convicted. Does that therefore mean that they're a danger to kids in coaching softball? I don't really see the link. But, you know, how to draw it up and where to draw the line, you know, I don't know specifically what a perfect way to do that would be.
Yeah.
I think if we change it, we're gonna have to change it with the best of intentions and try to write it as clearly as we can, but I can't promise you perfection on it.
You're gonna have to work with that with me. Like, through the years, there was this one gentleman, gosh, about ten years ago, and his looked like his was a felony on X, Y, and Z, because it was really involving kids. But as long as he got those charges, they didn't do the other charges. And if I hadn't known the circumstances, I wouldn't have known that a thirteen and fourteen-year-old girl was involved, and the parents just didn't wanna drag it through. So we're gonna have to figure that out, not you. But we're gonna have to figure that out, because I learned early on the way the legal system works, and how they plead less, and then other things never come up. So I don't know how to frame that. But again, if it's something like that, if there's a way to frame it, I'm fine with that. But that's my hesitation, because I will always err on the side of the children, always, every time. And, you know, sometimes it disqualifies us from things we've done, but I will always err on the side of kids. So that's just my thought, Commissioner Lober. And if we can think of something to frame that, again, I've tried. If you think of something, so that's just my thought, but not you. I like you. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. I think we are ready to move to board reports. County manager?
Commissioners, we have a, we had a board workshop scheduled for April 15th. At this time, we don't have anything to do on the 15th for that workshop, since the board gave direction at the prior budget workshop that we had. So we can cancel that workshop if the board's good with that.
That's good, board? Okay. I'm sorry, Ms. Sullivan, I do have one more. I had put you in after you spoke at the other one. Ms. Roop, I don't think I have another one on you.
I was just speaking on the Port St. John issue.
You did already, right?
No, no, it's the issue that came up about dissolving the board.
Well, I'm gonna let you, I'm sorry, ma'am. I'm gonna let you...
I have a card.
We didn't dissolve it. Is that good?
No, I'm trying to stand up for a lot of these issues.
You can. Come on up, and if you would, just make sure I get the correct card in afterwards. Ms. Sullivan?
Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. As you know, we have a manatee mortality event and a sea turtle mortality event that concerns many of the Brevard County residents. The concerns I have is, I watched the Save the Lagoon meeting, and I had fully expected that they would address this. And so I just want to read here what was approved when the referendum for the Save the Lagoon. "To restore the Indian River Lagoon through financing, planning, constructing, maintaining, and operating capital improvements and capital maintenance projects and programs designed to improve water quality, fish, wildlife, and marine habitat, remove mock, and reduce pollution." And so there's been some testing done on the manatees, and they find that for the number of years, they have higher levels of herbicides, the Roundup chemical. And so I expected that the Save the Lagoon meeting would discuss something. When you have the organisms of the lagoon being impacted, obviously, there's an issue there. You know, you wanna explore what it is. Have they talked to Fish and Wildlife Service, or Fish and Wildlife Commission? No. So it was very disappointing, and then I also, so I think there needs to be some pollution testing that is not in the Save the Lagoon, which brings me to the point that I requested from Ms. Virginia Barker a copy of the ordinance. She sent it to me. And in there, it seems the process is, the county drives what the Save the Lagoon program is doing, and the oversight kinda monitors the spending, essentially, to put it in a very generalized succinct sentence. And it seems to me that two things, I would ask if the county's input, one is growth management. Dr. Windsor said in a video that the number one thing that is impacting the lagoon is growth management. And so that needs to be looked at. Some pollution testing. MRC, at their luncheon, the State of the Lagoon, indicated that even in areas where the nutrient level was above what the state recommended, they were still seeing the seagrass decline, which means it's something other than the nutrient loading. So you can't just use that as your measure of success. When you think about, we had a drought last season, we had a drought at the beginning of this season, and then we had heavy rain, two inches above norm. That's gonna wash not just nutrients, but herbicides into the lagoon. And that may be what is causing the mortality events, not just of the manatees, but also the sea turtles, because the green sea turtle, which is what it's primarily affecting, it is a coastal turtle that lives in the lagoon. That's its habit. Both feed on seagrass. So I would just ask the county to look at MRCs.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Your time's up.
I have two seconds.
No, ma'am. It clicked off. I did. It was going the other way. Ms. Roop?
Yes, I just want...
Sorry about that.
That's okay. Fine. I just wanted to give you a little history on the Port St. John Special District Board, the Planning and Zoning Board. And I can't recollect now, it was either late 1990s or early 2000s, we came to the county to ask them for a special P&amp;Z board, just to look at Port St. John rezonings, et cetera. The county said, yes, we could do this. And our reasoning for it was, we kept coming to the county planning and zoning board. They weren't listening to us. They were denying us things we didn't think was right, et cetera, et cetera. I'm sure you know. And this board has been going. It's only in the last couple of months that I know that we haven't met, and one was because of the COVID. Too many people came into the room, and county staff didn't like it, neither did the board. But... But the contention there was between the two boards, the county planning and zoning, and the Port St. John, a prime example, we wanted a board of our own, so we could visit these sites, we knew the problems of Port St. John, and a prime example that's just happened, they, on the rezoning, Ms. Ruzanka and the applicant's rezone, the Port St. John Special District Board unanimously denied the request. The county planning and zoning board unanimously approved it. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Rube. What I like about that board is taxation with representation, they talk things out, and I think the commissioners of this district always listen, and I think that greatly influenced Ms. Ruzanka as far as bringing through another BDP by the time it got here, so I think it's great, it's a way to listen to the community. Ms. Bentley?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't think the board took a vote on whether or not to have the workshop.
Okay, can I have a motion to remove the workshop?
So moved.
Everybody motioned that one. Motion by Commissioner Tabaya, I'll give it to him this time, and a second by Commissioner Loeb. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0. Is that all, sir?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Ms. Bentley?
Yes, ma'am. I have a report on Ellis versus Brevard County, the charter cap case. Commissioners, as you know, the clerk's attorney has offered to settle the lawsuit by the clerk against the county. The county won at the trial court level, and the clerk appealed that decision to the 5th District Court of Appeal. We are now working on briefs. The attorney for the clerk has offered to dismiss the case if the county agrees to vacate or eliminate the trial court order in the county's favor. The board has several options at this point. One, take no action, in which case we will continue to defend the appeal. Two, reject the offer, we will again continue to defend the appeal. Three, request an executive session to discuss the offer, or four, accept the settlement proposal.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Loeb?
Yeah, I'm gonna be diplomatic about this. When I first saw this, I wondered if I should take my wife to a neurologist. There is no way on God's green earth that I would do anything but one or two, and in fact, I think it's so ridiculous, it doesn't even warrant a response, so I would suggest we go with option one. It's ridiculous, we would have to, we would have to be almost certifiable. If we do go with another option, I will get straitjackets for everyone here, and we can wear them at a zoning meeting.
I like option one, too, but I think we're going to have to get you marital counseling after that last comment. Okay, Commission?
I'll make a motion to approve the first.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Ruzanka, second by Commissioner Loeb, for option one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0. Commissioner Loeb?
I was actually trying to turn my light off, I'm sorry. Oh, is that for board reports? Oh, okay, it is back to me, I don't have anything.
Okay, Commissioner Tabaya.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And the 13th isn't that big of a day, and neither is Friday, but when they align, that's a big deal. Well, we have an alignment that's taking place today that I wanted to make mention, and that's on Taco Tuesday, as well as it's National Chip and Dip Day. Not to be confused with National Chips and Salsa, because there's also that day, that one I celebrated February 24th. So just wanted to point out, Happy National Chip and Dip Day, Madam Chair.
And National Green Tie Day.
And Taco Tuesday.
Madam Chair, may I ask Commissioner Tabaya a very brief question on that?
Oh, most certainly.
Are you getting tacos today, sir?
Immediately upon adjournment.
Good man, all right, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'll make this quick, so Commissioner Tabaya can feast. I received a phone call, my board report today is going to require a vote by this board, if I can get a second. I received a phone call from a man named John Holliday on Friday, he goes by Doc Holliday, and he is affiliated with Friends of Army Aviation, FAA, and he said that his group would like to fly in a Vietnam-era helicopter to Wickham Park during the Vietnam War memorial this April, but he approached the county, and the county said that he couldn't do it unless he got approval from the board. So I said, well, give me some particulars. The county, the big deal with the county was insurance, so he has $3 million worth of insurance, which the county said would suffice. So I will just give you some broad information. They want to bring in a Vietnam-era helicopter to Wickham Park, they want to land, display, and fly for free, anyone who would like to experience what a ride is, would be like in a chopper from Vietnam. I personally can remember when the men and women and the vets came back from Vietnam, where they were sent by their country, by the way, and I can remember them being disparaged to the point where they were spit on in airports, and on streets, and I can tell you, it had a, it had a real detrimental effect on our veterans back then, many of whom wouldn't even wear their uniforms in public. It was that bad. So this helicopter would give those people, those vets, those heroes, an opportunity to see and fly in one of these choppers. I talked to Sheriff Ivy about it, and he said he agrees that he's seen similar effects, that it has a, has a real cathartic effect on people that served during that time. So the FAA, as I said, would provide the $3 million of insurance, they would land, they would let people, it would be a static display, people could tour it, people that were rescued, guys that owe their lives to the fact that when they were wounded on the battlefield, the helicopters flew in and flew them to safety, and they will fly, if anybody wants to fly and pay the price. So I would like to make a motion that we approve the FAA to bring their helicopter to Wickham Park and park it for display, and to fly flights.
Okay, I have a motion on the table, I will support that. Commissioner Loeb?
Just a couple of things. I'd support it if you make a little bit of an amendment. I would ask that they name us, the county, as an additional insured on their policy, and that they maintain the policy.
That has already, yes, that's part of...
Okay, so if we're an additional insured, and they maintain at least the existing limits, which you said were 3 million, if they want to raise them, that's up to them, and then give a copy either to the county attorney's office or to risk management. If that's all contemplated by your motion, I'll support it.
Yes, it is.
We have a motion and a second?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Smith, thanks for bringing this forward. My question would be, why was our initial negative by the county? Is there an ordinance, or is there a policy that doesn't allow you to?
Well, there is some wording that would prevent it, and the other issue was the liability.
Madam Chair, is it an AO, is it an ordinance?
It's, the Parks had a policy, and in this case, it related to the fact that they were going to be flying the helicopter in and out during the actual presentation, which is something that the Parks Department has not allowed in any situation, where you're actually going to have the public there during the times of it going up and down. That pretty much was the reason Parks was remaining consistent in how it applied across the board.
Correct.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Smith, can I give you some homework? If we are going to make this change, this organization may want to come back next year or the year following, would you bring forward a change to that policy that gets it in alignment, so they can plan ahead and don't have to come through the board next time?
Sure, and that's a good point, and to the point of them flying, they do this all over the country, and they provide a landing area, they rope it off, and so...
And if you put all those, those safety, those liability parameters, you know, you wouldn't have to wait, or they wouldn't have to wait to come to the board in order to do this.
Good point.
I certainly will support it, just to be clear, as long as they meet those minimum standards. I just don't want another, you know, local yokel to come down and want to start landing helicopters, but not take those same precautions.
Yeah, and I think it's important that the wording, and I'll work with Eden on that, but I think the wording has to include that...
Wait, you're passing the homework on Eden already?
Yes, yes. I learned one thing in my 40 years in business, you delegate.
You know, Eden's not even a healthcare attorney, do you know that?
No.
No, I did not know that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0. Is that all, sir?
Yes, I'm done.
Vice Chair Ruzanka.
I don't have anything.
Okay, I have one thing. This has been the coldest meeting I've ever sat through in my life. It is so cold in here. On that, I will call this meeting adjourned.
The opinions expressed by any member of the public during any period of public comment do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, or the program's sponsor, and are solely those of the presenter. The Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, and the program's sponsor hereby expressly disclaim any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public during any such period.